Good afternoon. I'll call to order the July 6th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Bender, Slack, Loopkeep here, and Gisselman. At this time, please be sure any mobile devices are silenced. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the June 15th, 2015 meeting. May I have a motion to approve those actions? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our next item of business is to organize the agenda. We'll determine which items we will discuss, which will be on consent, if there are any to be withdrawn or continued. The agendas are available in the hallway if you don't have a copy, and I'll start at the top. So our first item on the agenda is 3100 West Lake Street. That's a registered land survey. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will place that on the consent agenda. Item number two is a partial alley vacation in the vicinity of 33rd Avenue Northeast and Taylor Street Northeast. That item will be continued to the July 20th meeting. Item number three is also a partial alley vacation in the vicinity of Robin Street and Cumberland Road. We will discuss that item. Item four is the Huron and Essex Hotel at 501 Huron Boulevard and 2510 Essex Street Southeast. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item number five is 4712 Longfellow Avenue. That's a rezoning. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, I will put that on consent. Item number six is the GAF heater unit at 50 through 74 Lowry Avenue North. We will discuss that item. Item number seven is Walker Art Center addition and site improvements at 725 Vinland Place and 1750 Hennepin Avenue. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, that will be on the consent agenda. Item number eight is the Edison High School Northeast Green Campus project. Several applications for expansion of a school at 2030 Monroe Street Northeast. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, I will put that on consent. Item number nine is 100 Washington Avenue South. Several applications for modifications to an office building there. We'll discuss item number nine. Item number 10 is the Washington and Chicago Project at 233 Park Avenue, 713 Washington Avenue South, and 70708 and 724 Third Street South. Several applications for a new mixed-use building. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, that will be on consent. Item number 11 is 314 Sixth Avenue North. Several applications for a new mixed-use building there. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, that will be on consent. Item number 12, Episcopal Commons at 1730 Clifton Place. That application for a new mixed-use building has been withdrawn. We understand there are some changes proposed to the projects. The application has been withdrawn. Item 13 is the Superior Plating Site Redevelopment at 315 First Avenue Northeast and 101, 115, 119, and 125 Fourth Street Northeast. We will discuss that item. And item number 14 is the Lowry Avenue Northeast Corridor Plan. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, I will put that on consent. So our modified agenda is as follows. Items 1, 4, 5, 7, 8, 10, 11, and 14 will be on consent. We will discuss items 3, 6, 9, and 13. Item 2 will be continued to the July 20th meeting, and item 12 has been withdrawn. May I have a motion to approve the modified agenda? Commissioner Slack?
President Brown, I just want to note for the record that I will abstain from a vote on item number 14.
All right. Thank you. Would someone else like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yes, which item are you here for? Item 4, okay, okay. And that is, let's see, that's the Huron and Essex Hotel, 501 Huron Boulevard. We can discuss that item as well and take that off of consent. May I have a revised motion to approve the agenda with item 4 added to our items for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we can move on to our Committee of the Whole consent agenda, and Commissioner Slack, do you have a report on that?
Thank you, President Brown. At the June 18th, 2015 Committee of the Whole, we heard four presentations that required actions. The first was a land sale, 1704 33rd Avenue North. The second was the Corcoran Triangle Tiff Plan and related plan modifications. The third item was Anson Brooks Mansion Designation Study. And the fourth item was the Glendale Housing Development Project Plan. The recommended motion for each of those items was to approve the staff report and recommendation based on the item being consistent with the Minneapolis Plan.
All right. Thank you. And I will take that as a motion to find that those items are consistent with the comprehensive plan. I should note that the designation study, we actually don't formally need to make a finding, although it was included on the agenda anyway. Do I have a second? All right. All in favor? Next, may I have a motion to continue item number 2 to the July 20th meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, next, may I have a motion to accept the withdrawal of item number 12? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that is items 1, 5, 7, 8, 10, 11, and 14. Is there anyone here to speak on any of those items? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that motion carries. Next, we can move on to our items for discussion, the first of which is item number three, which is an alley vacation, and Ms. Farrar is staff.
I will keep my presentation brief this evening. This is a vacation petition by Joseph Smith to vacate part of the alley that is located in Block 5 of Southgate Terrace of the 2nd Division. It's bounded by Robin Street, West 54th Street, Cumberland Road, and Uptown Avenue South. So the highlighted parcel that is up here on your map is the location of the petitioner. And as we dial down a little bit more closely, this is probably the most helpful exhibit. The area in red is the subject area in which the applicant proposes to vacate. The yellow areas that are located on this overhead image were vacated in 1964. So this is a remnant parcel of a dedicated public alley that is a paper alley. So it is not paved. There are no improvements currently in that area. The property's owned R1. It's located in the Shoreland Overly District. Just general land use features. It's about three blocks from the neighborhood commercial note that's located at 54th and Penn, and then Penn is also a designated community corridor. Originally, the reasons that the applicant had given for vacating this remnant portion of the public alley was in order to initially have a kids' play area, and then perhaps in the future to construct a three-car garage. That changed throughout the process. Now it seems like it's perhaps a bit more of a maintenance issue, or perhaps it's all three of them combined. But nonetheless, Public Works is recommending denial of this vacation petition. And the reason for that is that currently there's a 60-inch concrete storm line that's located in the area that the applicant, or that the city needs to continue to access through that existing easement. In addition, during the referral period, which is a 30-day referral period, both Comcast and Xcel Energy also have utilities in the area, and they requested that their easements be maintained as well. Our recommendation is in line with what Public Works recommended, which is to deny this vacation petition. Just as sort of a side note, there were some concerned neighbors in this vicinity about the proposed vacation and how it would potentially impact their property. And so I did speak with a few of those individuals. The applicant, I think if they're here, they submitted some information late in the day, I believe that you have it, that shows some conditions, some pictures of that specific area. I did talk with him on the phone this morning, and basically what it came down to is that he doesn't like the way that the alley is being not maintained by the city, that people are not taking care of it, there's weeds, people are dumping things, et cetera. So I did make contact with the Public Works Division, and they will have a crew that's going, that will go out to the site with the surveyor's office, demarcate the area that is a dedicated public alley, and they will clean and maintain that area. So that will happen sometime soon. I will close there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Slack?
On page 6, there's another graphic that sort of color codes, I think, each of the individual parcels, and then highlights the area to be vacated, as well as previously vacated. So is the area directly to the south that is not colored, is that actually an existing right-of-way that is to be maintained?
The area in this location is actually part of the individual's current property. What they wanted to do was square off the backside of their lot. So the areas in yellow have already been vacated. The area in red is the question that's in the petition that was before planning staff and Public Works, and what was referred out. That segment has actual infrastructure within it, which must be maintained for maintenance purposes by Public Works.
What about the, essentially, the open part that goes at an angle?
That is a piece of the remnant alley that the applicant did not request to be vacated. So in essence, what would remain would be all of this area. So the storm sewer line and the utilities are all located within this area. This is the extension of the property, again, that the applicant was requesting be vacated.
And do you know, does the storm sewer essentially come down that area to remain, and does it go south to Robin Street, or does it go out to Cumberland?
I'm not exactly sure. I believe that it extends down to Robin Street, but in any event, it connects with the existing utility framework that exists within the public alley that is currently paved and improved.
Great, thank you.
And I have a question. Becca, who is responsible for maintenance, say, of mowing and taking care of noxious weeds and such of an alley that isn't paved, that's simply functioning kind of like a utility easement, or at least that's the reason the city has it? Are the adjacent property owners responsible for maintaining it like a boulevard, or does the city go in there and maintain it?
I mean, it's uncommon to have paper alleys. It doesn't mean that we don't have paper alleys or dedicated public right-of-way that exist for alleys throughout the city, and the onus is on the city typically to maintain these. Oftentimes, they are adopted by adjacent neighboring properties, and they're maintained as such by those individuals, that's extensions of their yards. And it doesn't appear as though that's the case in the specific circumstance. So Public Works will go out in the next week or two, again, denote where exactly the boundaries of that easement are and clean up the property per the applicant's request.
All right. Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, if there are none, I will open the public hearing on this item. I'd like first to hear from the applicant if they are in the audience. And please state your name and address for the record. And if you don't mind, stand at the center of the microphone.
My name is Joseph Smith, and I'm the owner of 2612 Robin Street. This is Brian Emerson. He's my neighbor. I have put together a presentation that kind of shows and pictures what this area looks like. If you don't mind, I'd like to put that up on the screen.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, doesn't look like it's going to show up very well, unfortunately, but let me move on to the next page. Maybe that'll be better. Okay, it's somewhat showing up. I apologize for that. What I'm trying to get across with this picture here is that the location in red, this is the area that I'm looking to have vacated. It's directly behind my home. This is in stark contrast, in terms of the condition, is in stark contrast with the area to the left, which has already been vacated and fenced off. This area is known for nicely-kept homes. It's very nicely-kept front yards. I have a few pictures I'll show you. This is an area that's really gotten pretty trashed lately, and what it does is allow us for people with trucks to back the truck up and to dump stuff off at that location. Here's a picture of some of the items that are in this area today. The first is a picture of yard waste that was dumped onto the land. The second is a picture, a close-up picture of a rusty laundry pole that has been covered by foliage. It's very dangerous. There's the pole here and the concrete base at the top. There's additional yard waste here as well. Here's a few other pictures. The first here is overgrown foliage into the alley, making it increasingly difficult to get to garbage cans. The one in the middle, the garbage cans are actually misplaced. You can't see in the picture, but right now there are six garbage cans behind my home. And this is coming from the neighbors that are, I assume, are having troubles with this vacation. I don't believe they belong there. The third picture is abandoned river rocks on a plastic cart. This is hidden by the foliage as well. This is potentially unstable and unsafe. Here's a picture of the front of the home. Can't see very well, but it's very nicely maintained. Same with the back of the yard. You can also see the public alleyway that I maintain. And the reason I can do this, even though it's a public space, is because there's no forces working against me. In the back, it's very difficult to maintain. There's a lot going on, and it's not being maintained or kept up well. So as I see it, here are the pros and cons for the city, from the city's perspective. The pros being clearing this unsafe condition, added tax revenue, collection of fees on yard waste, beautification of the city, and easy access for Xcel and Comcast. So what this last one, what I'm suggesting is not to build or install any structures on that lot. Just a vacation of the land for grass and play area for my kids.
Is it okay, Vice, to speak for just a moment?
Yeah, you can go ahead, and please state your name and address.
I'm his direct neighbor with the big lot in the gray next to it, and I've been there since July of 2000, and not once has anything been done to that little parcel of land except more junk get thrown in there. It's an eyesore. I don't know of any reason that Comcast or Xcel would need access, because I believe that their lines are overhead. So I've never seen any maintenance done on it whatsoever, and it just keeps getting worse and worse. I think that he would end up taking care of it. The other thing, the other point that he makes is everybody's got their garbage cans, not the people in Robin Street, it's the people on 54th Street that have the garbage cans next to his garage, which I don't see the necessity for that either. So I think that you should grant him the vacation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Well, actually, first, Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Gisselman?
No. No, this is, we're on item 3 right now. Commissioner Gisselman, you have a question for the applicant?
Yes, thank you. It sounds to me that certainly there's probably a situation that needs to be remedied, just in the way of people dumping things there, and the area needs to be cleaned up. To me, it doesn't seem like filing this petition is the remedy for that problem. And it sounds like, from what we heard from Ms. Farrar, that the two of you had a conversation about there being a, perhaps a different remedy, or the city coming out and dealing with some of these, some of these issues that you've mentioned. Do you agree with that?
No, I don't, because the reason for that is because, you know, that's a temporary fix. I don't believe there's anyone incentivized to take care of that on a daily basis. These things happen overnight. I would be incentivized to do that with the vacation of this property.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? And again, is anyone else here to speak on item number 3? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioner Loopkeep here, you have a question?
I have a question for staff. So Becca, I'm not quite up on my Public Works lingo, but what's the difference between this and just having it become private property with a public utility easement?
It's oftentimes when we see vacation applications, the Public Works Division will support them if they don't have infrastructure that they actually need to maintain and access. In this specific circumstance, basically, if you vacated this area, you'd be land-locking it. They wouldn't have the ability to access it. And Public Works, their protocol, when it comes to this, is that they have infrastructure in these areas, they do not vacate it, because they have easements in place. There's no reason for them to try and extract then an easement from a property owner for access at a later date.
Okay, and it's because they have a 60-inch storm sewer underneath. Do you know where it is on the map at all? Is it just at the end of that diagonal stretch?
It runs within, basically, this area here. And so if you were to vacate that piece, basically, you're, not only can you not, it's not accessible, but now you have infrastructure that's on a residential property.
Okay. Thanks, Becca. And then I have a question for the applicant as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
So can you indicate on the map which of your neighbors are pretty much putting their dumpsters in, would equate to, your backyard?
Yes. I could put it up, but unfortunately, I don't think the picture shows up very well, but maybe I can kind of do one of these. You can see multiple garbage cans back there.
Yeah, do you know, I mean, do you know which neighbors, I mean, are they one you can talk to, and do they have alternate locations to put their garbage cans, or where?
It moves around, to be honest with you, but there's always six back there. I'm not sure whose is whose, other than what's mine, because they're kind of the closest to my home. But both of the individuals on the north side who these garbage cans belong to have driveway. One of them doesn't even, is not even adjacent to this property.
And so are they, if this were closed off, where would they put their, in front of their house, or what's the?
Well, they could put it behind, they are on the alley, but they use this corner to put their garbage can. There's also the opportunity to put it in the front of their yard.
Okay.
They have a driveway out to 54th Street.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Farrar, so I understand the seriousness of this, the need for our staff to access the sewer line. It's kind of not an insignificant need, right? But, so why is the city, I mean, how did it get to this state? Why is Public Works not maintaining it? Are there other options for Public Works to consider, like, paving it or maintaining it better if we're not able to vacate the alley here?
My assumption would be is that Public Works really hasn't, they haven't had to do maintenance, obviously, on the line, and they probably haven't had other neighbors that have complained about the circumstance. You know, typically with these paper alleys, as I mentioned earlier, what they do is they become overgrown, or they become extensions of people's backyards. And basically, what people do is they take ownership of these areas as extensions of their yards. So it's uncommon for us to receive complaints about it. And really, until today, you know, even though this petition was filed in May of this year, there was no, there was nothing in this packet that suggested it was a maintenance-related issue. It was an issue for him to be able to have additional yard area for a children's play area and a garage. And so, you know, the recommendation, the staff report was mailed out, and then it came in this weekend, and now it's a maintenance issue. So what I've done is I've made sure that I've contacted the correct people in Public Works to clean up that area, and that's, that's the ability that I have at this point, is to get it cleaned up. And if it continues to be an issue, you know, the applicant has recourse via 311. I can certainly give the contact of the individual in Public Works that I'm working with to ensure that the area remains clear of debris. And if there is this illegal dumping, or, you know, whatever the situation of yard waste, that's something that, you know, Public Works can continue to handle.
Because if we did grant the vacation, there would still need to be an easement anyway, so that Public Works could go through there. So no one would ever be able to build
Correct.
... a structure, but it could potentially cause future issues where somebody might not know that they have a storm sewer running under where they want to build a garage, for example.
Correct. And we don't land-lock utilities. So the idea is, right, that you have continuous access along the entire length of whatever the utility is. And so in this circumstance, if we were to vacate per the applicant's request, we've essentially given ourselves a segment in which we actually can't access the rest of it, in which we would have an easement retained, because we would have a break in the easement.
Right. Commissioner Loopkeep here.
Yeah, Becca, I'm just wondering if, aside from contacting Public Works, is there a way to also contact Solid Waste Recycling and ask them to maybe send letters out to the neighbors and maybe outline on the maps where they're allowed to put their garbage cans? And I think they're supposed to have the numbers, house numbers on the garbage cans and recycling anyway, and perhaps some signage back there, just to help so he's not having to argue with his neighbors over their garbage.
Sure, we can certainly do that.
Okay, well, if there aren't any more questions, would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Gisselman?
I'll move in accordance with staff recommendation and Public Works that we deny this petition.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Loopkeep here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
It's 5-0.
All right. And that motion carries, although it does seem we provided some clear direction that some of the maintenance issues are addressed. So that concludes our discussion on that item. We can move on to our next item, which is item number four, the Huron and Essex Hotel. Mr. Hanauer is listed as staff, although I do not believe he's here. So Ms. Farrar, could you give a short presentation? We obviously approved some applications for this project not too long ago, and there are some minor changes that are coming back to us.
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, I am taking this over for Aaron, so I apologize if I, it takes me a minute or two to find some of the exhibits, but I will put up some maps shortly. As you noted originally, the applications for this specific project were approved on May 11th of this year. And what you approved at that time was a conditional use permit of variance, or variance applications, then site plan review for a new five-story hotel on the subject site. There were various conditions of approval. Those conditions of approval have been carried over now into this new subset of applications. And basically, what happened was that the applicant, through the course of working with the actual hotel chain that will be operating out of the building, had some concerns about what you approved, and what the developer actually proposed, and what you ended up approving as part of the original conditional use permit, site plan and variance application. So what you see before you now is a subsequent update to that original hotel project that you approved. This did get approved on consent. The property zone I1, it's located in industrial living overly district and then university area overly district. And the subject parcels are those, which are in black, that are highlighted on your screen. This is Huron Boulevard, and this is Essex. Essex is a one-way heading west. And then Huron, obviously, is the feeder that comes off of 94. So basically, what has happened is that the applicant, again, has submitted a conditional use permit and site plan review to maintain the five-story height of the building, but to add some floor area. So what we typically do in this circumstance is we do any sort of changes to bulk, especially in a circumstance in which you have already approved a conditional use permit for height, that has to come back in conjunction with the site plan review. And so there is a really handy exhibit that's located in your packets, and it is located near the end of the packet, but what I have done is pulled that out for you. And basically, what this exhibit shows is it shows the expansion of the building on the first floor. So this shaded area here, this is basically the modification to the building. This is what you're approving this evening. It's about 6,100 square feet in total, and it includes this specific isolated area on the first level of the plan. And then the subsequent floors, 2 through 5, so it's not just this area anymore, it's an area that actually cantilevers over the Essex side of the building. So in essence, this is the only modification that's happening to the actual bulk of the building itself. There are some slight adjustments to the parking area in the back, all of which were deemed to be positive improvements. I believe there's an old telecom facility and some sort of satellite equipment that went along, that will now be removed as the parking lot has expanded out that way. But those are the primary changes that essentially triggered the need for the applicant to come back and get an amendment to their previously approved CUP and site plan review. So as I mentioned earlier, we are recommending approval of this again. Ultimately, the request is from four stories or 56 feet to five stories or 64.7 feet. And then the site plan review, again, for approximately 6,100 square feet to allow that five-story 140-room hotel. And I won't read through all the conditions of approval, just so you've seen them before. But in essence, it's, again, the carryover from the original conditions of approval that were on the project in May. So I will close here, but I'm happy to answer questions as soon as you hear testimony, if necessary. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak briefly first. And please state your name and address.
Sure. My name's Scott Nelson, I'm with DJR Architecture, and Becca gave a good recap. We've been working with Erin for this. It occurred very shortly after our initial approval, which I believe was on May 11th, that the second level of review with the corporate standard that we're working with on that requested, actually indeed required, that we enlarge the size of the rooms. Our whole concept design had been through their initial review and fairly enthusiastic approval, and then they came up with this requirement. So working with staff, it was determined we needed to do a modified application, so that's what we've been working on. The rendering on the screen shows the addition, which is a cantilever over the side. And we've been very careful that none of the, none of the pieces that we've added to this hotel impact any of the variances that were, or setback variances were granted previously. It's all within current setbacks and areas, and we don't have any issues with the floor area ratios or anything like that. It was a fairly minor modification. We should also note that the staff requested several modifications and additions to the landscaping as part of the condition of approval last time, and all of those have already been made. And in addition to some additional screening that we did on the parking lot. So that's, it's a very, very straightforward application. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Go ahead, and please state your name and address for the record. And if you don't mind, come to the center microphone here.
The gentleman is 78, he's my friend, and he's also foreign national. He speaks Spanish, it's his maternal language.
Okay, okay.
No, I can speak English also. I have worked more than 25 years for the U.S. Agency for International Development in NIMA. And I am a legal resident for 20, almost 20 years here, so I think you won't have problems with my English. I have problems with your English.
And please, please state your name and address.
Well, I am, sorry, my name is Aurelio Tasso Loli. In South America, we include the name of the mother. Loli is by my mother's side, my second last name.
And what is your address?
My point? Oh, my address is 2530 Essex Street, Minneapolis, MN 554.
Thank you.
Okay. I am very sorry that I could not come on June 15. I am old and I have a terrible diarrhea that I couldn't be far from a bathroom, and I couldn't come here to oppose to the approvals, or at least to let my opinion to be held. I am a neighbor on the east side of the projected hotel, and also the former factory noodle manufacturing company Everfresh. I have planted in my lot about 32 yards, it's cypress-type trees. And the ones that are on the east side are about 20 and 10 are in my limits with the new, with this projected hotel. I have seen another project of the CPM, and I really dislike the way they are overcrowding with buildings the city of Minneapolis, as they have done in Washington Avenue and University Avenue. They have done something hard to be seen in modern construction. I see that they have one stair serving two buildings. These two buildings are too near. And we have so much snow here, I don't know if they are considering that the little plaza that is in front of the building is going to be the deposit for the snow whenever we have those big winters with great snow. So I am thinking that the profit-seeking pursuit of these engineers or of this corporation is too much. I don't see also that this is a great business, because I am spending most of my time working in the yard of this little property that I have, and I can see in the nights that there are some windows that never are lighted on. So there are several buildings for a student apartment which are never full. So the demand for apartments by students is not that much, that they may add more. Well, in this case, this is an hotel, and I have been told by one of the officers of CPM, who want to propose a purchase of my property, that the business of hotels is different, and that they have a lot of demand. The only one thing I am concerned is, and I think this is still proper, you have to approve, you are going to approve. And I will beg, or I would pray the Commissioners, this honorable president and bad president, to please take into account, because the way this, the way construction is being made now in this area, because they are overcrowding with buildings, the spaces, okay? There is another builder also that has gone, who is limited in the, in the south side with this project that has almost gone to the sidewalk. They are withdrawing very little, and they are trying to use too much of a space for the apartments, and they are not leaving areas for green. Very little is, so please consider that before you approve this. And what will be the effect of approving five-story, a five-story building instead of a four-story building that has already been approved? Why would you grant one additional? That will kill my plans. Because they will probably put a very close wall for the, for the, they want to make, I think, an access to the parking spot that they are going to have, or something, a passway for their cars. So they want to take whatever they can, and I don't think they have the right to do that. They must restrict, as everybody restricts to the lot they have bought. So they must modify their plans and reduce whatever, I'll be present if I am alive, because I can die any moment. I am 79 years old now. I'll be present, I'll be watching, I won't let them if I cannot oppose. I have also tried to do that before in some other place, but I know that they bring their machinery, and with their machinery, they are men threatening you of smashing you if you don't move away out. So probably, they will do the same. Once they remove the fence that already exists, the wire fence, it will be very hard for us to say defense was here or there. And then they can do whatever they want, but I'll be there seeing that they don't go beyond defense limits. Because by the right of use, I don't know if that is something considered in your law, but the right of use is something generally accepted internationally, that any place that has already been, even though a new buyer comes and the neighbor is encroaching, the right of use of something that has stayed there for a number of years remains there. Okay, so I don't know exactly, but I have a lot of survey, and I know I have some idea what is my lot, okay? And I have already had problems with the former owners, Everfresh, because we never identify where these marks, metal marks, are in the corners of the, of both lots. But they, I have seen in the last week, a survey professional, and I think he has good marks already. So, but this is as to the way, I think, their style of building that they are going by. But I will please tell you, before approving the fifth story, but take into consideration, the city is one of the most beautiful cities in the world, very green. My trees are condemned to die if you approve that fifth story, because on that site, in the afternoons, my trees enjoy the sun of the afternoon. So please just take that into account. I don't think any else is worth to be mentioned now, because I am late to be here. I didn't, I didn't know what else they have been already granted, but please don't grant that fifth level. And also instruct the people, the professionals, that have to give them the permit to begin the construction to respect, respect the rules of construction of Minnesota. They are nobody exceptional to be given a lot of grants. They are just citizens here, and I am also a citizen here. So I have to be respected, even though I am not so millionaires as they are. CPM is the constructors of the University of Minnesota, okay? I am supposed to build their, a house, but I didn't build because when I made my plans, the city was allowing a usage of 28%, and it has a building of only, the use is 10%. So I would have to have built 18% of this. I paid off the city, and when I went again to the city, they told me, Aurelio, now we are approving 72%. So my plans were no good anymore, okay?
Sorry to interrupt, but we have a number of items on the agenda, so we should probably wrap up. We understand you have some concerns about the height and location of the building.
I wanted to explain why it is not built. I don't have life expectancy to take a loan of 15 years to be paid, okay? I am almost 80, and I have been since 10 years back, more than 60, and I was expecting to die any year. So that's why I haven't built. My son is a physician, educated in the University of Minnesota, and he didn't want to get involved in this, because he was in the faculty year. So it has a reason that, for me, that there is not built there, okay? This is all. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for the speaker? In that case, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. No, no one has questions for you. I asked them that. You're welcome. In that case, may I have a motion? We have two applications here, conditional amendment to the conditional use permit and amendment to the site plan. Commissioner Lupe here.
I just have a question for the applicant, actually, or actually the architect. I just wanted to know if you could briefly address two of the primary areas of concern he had regarding snow removal? And perhaps you could explain the shadow studies and what the difference would be between the four stories and the five stories, to see if it would at all make it have an effect on his property?
We had the five-story on the previous application, we're not adding a story. There was a shadow study submitted, I don't know if I... Don't know, we have, on occasion, done shadow studies that compare the four and the five. I don't think this, we did that in this case. They, this would be the spring one, the one for midsummer, and the one for midwinter. Difference in the height, I think one of the things about this too is the, it's both the, there's both the stories and a height, and we're what's the difference? We're just a little bit over what the height requirement would be as well.
But in referencing the evening shadow studies, it would appear to me, and perhaps you can...
Right, I mean, the difference, okay, let's look at, just for instance, maybe the summer one, which is probably closest to the one we have right now. An hour before sunset, if we were, the difference would be fairly minor between four and five, actually.
Okay, and then can you explain really briefly on your site plan, how you plan to do snow removal? Because that was the first point he brought up.
They're removing the snow from the site. There's a small... As you can see, this is our site plan. So this is the parking garage, and this is an exterior parking area. So there's really very little area for snow to collect, but that part will be, that part will be removed. The garage is actually open.
And the sidewalk and right-of-way and steps that he was concerned about?
The sidewalk comes around here and goes around to this side, to an exit point over there.
And the snow from that will go where? Just because that's...
I'm thinking they would probably just remove that as well.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, are there any other questions? If there are none, would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Slack.
I make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item A, conditional use permit.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Lupe here.
I'll be supporting the motion, because the shadow study wouldn't have any different effect between four and five stories for the neighbor's property. It would shadow the same amount, given the height, so unfortunately, making any changes wouldn't benefit them at all.
Right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Fender?
Aye.
Five zero.
And next, we have item B, the site plan review. Commissioner Slack.
Make a motion for, to approve item number B, site plan review per staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Fender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Five zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on this item. Next is item six, the GAF heater unit of 50 through 74 Lowry Avenue North, and Ms. Smith is staff.
This one on, okay, great, thanks. Good evening. GAF has submitted a conditional use permit application to increase the maximum permitted height for a 71-foot-tall heater and odor mitigation unit. This falls within the I-3 General Industrial District, the Mississippi Critical Area Overlay District, and the Shoreland Overlay District, as well as the Flood Clean Overlay District, but the height is regulated by the other three. So, the maximum height, based on the overlay districts, is 35 feet, and the applicant is proposing 71 feet. The subject site includes two parcels, as you'll see, which are 50 and 74 Lowry Avenue North. They're adjacent to Lowry Avenue Bridge, which runs to the south, and the Mississippi River, which runs to the east, and the total lot area for both sites, for both parcels is 429,000 square feet. This is an elevation showing the proposed heater unit, and it would replace an existing 53-foot-tall unit that is also adjacent to other multiple stories, chains that are about 60 feet in height, as you can see from this other elevation. The applicant has stated that they're proposing to construct a new and more efficient heater unit, and in order, and that's in order to reduce the odors that are being produced and lessen the effect on nearby properties. Because the new unit can heat shingles at higher temperatures, at higher temperatures, process is more efficient, and in turn, the unit would assist in mitigating the amount of odors that are produced. You'll note that the proposed heater unit narrows to less than three feet wide on the top portion, that is between 42 feet and 71 feet above grade. Here is a view of the site, and the proposed unit would be in the north, the mid northern, central part of the site, that's very close to 33rd Avenue North. There are medium and industrial uses to the north and south of the site, and residential industrial uses are located to the west. The nearest residential property to the proposed heater unit would be about 550 feet to the Here's another view of the site, but this is looking south. You can see that the Lowry Avenue Bridge is raised above the site. This is the proposed site plan from the applicant, and the applicant would be adding striping to both parking areas that are in the western part of the site, and also on the southeastern part of the state, next to the river. Staff is recommending approval of the 71-foot-tall structure with conditions based on the findings found on pages two through six of your staff report. In summary, the height of the proposed unit is compatible with the scale and character of the surrounding uses. The proposal to install a more efficient heater unit that would mitigate odors is expected to improve the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity. Staff has received a number of comments from the public, and also from one of the adjacent neighborhoods, Marshall Terrace. Those should be found in your packets. And in summary, most commenters are not supportive of the proposal, and are concerned with ongoing odor and pollution concerns from the site. I'm here, along with applicants, representatives, to help answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, one real quick question. So, the intent of the smaller, or the taller stack in this proposal is to replace the shorter one. The shorter one goes offline. What, and this kind of goes to some of the letters that we received. It appears in these letters that there was some sort of commitment, whether it was written commitment or verbal commitment, to do $500,000 worth of improvements, to improve air quality, maybe efficiency in the process. If that's recent, has that actually had a positive effect, and subsequently, why the need to put up a taller stack?
Unfortunately, I can't answer that question, but the applicant is here, and they might be able to help answer that question.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing on this item, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Brian McCool with Frederickson &amp; Byron, 200 South Sixth Street, Suite 4000, Minneapolis. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. I'm serving as land use counsel for GAF in connection with this conditional use permit application. My remarks will be brief, because we have some technical requirements. I have the plant manager, Brandon Boyd, with me this evening, and also Tommy Richardson, who's vice president of operations. And so, Tommy, I'm going to turn it over to him. He can address Commissioner Slack's question, and then give a little bit more background on why we're doing this project right now. Thank you.
Thank you, and please state your name and address for the record.
Tommy Richardson. I'm here to represent GAF Building Materials.
And your address, if you don't mind. Your office address is fine.
I work out of my home in Evansville, Indiana.
Okay, thank you.
As I said, I'm here to represent GAF. Thank you for your time and your consideration this evening. I can't address your question directly, but would like to give you some background first, if that's appropriate.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. This conditional use permit, which I'll speak to secondarily, is as a result of ongoing odor complaints that we've received. This is what we call internally Phase Two of the odor remediation issues. Phase One included, as you mentioned, almost $500,000 worth of work, a supplemental air project, which went into our combustion unit that was mentioned earlier, is the 53-foot stack. That stack does not go away. That stack stays. The stack that's coming in as the conditional use permit is a 71-foot stack that is in addition to the 53-foot stack. We have put supplemental air intake into the 53-foot stack combustion unit. We now burn more efficiently there. We've seen process data that tells us we've improved the emissions from that stack. Our move forward to remediate even more odors is a $1 million or $990,000 project that will add an additional, will add a heater. It's what we call the Born Heater. That's the brand name of the heater. That is the unit with the 71-foot stack. What that will do is our current combustion unit combusted or burned the fumes coming from our process, and it heated asphalt for our process. What we're doing is splitting that unit, so that we have a heater that heats the asphalt. In that regard, we can turn up the combustion unit to higher temperatures, more consistency with the flame going up into the combustion chamber, and have more efficient combustion in the combustion chamber that exists now. So, the heater of the 71-foot stack, and the heater, is an additional heater unit that does nothing but heat asphalt. As I said earlier, this is a $1 million project, $996,000 project. It is solely for the use, solely to be used for burning fumes and remediating odors. It gives us no benefit operationally, other than mitigating odors and cutting down the complaints. It doesn't increase our capacity, it doesn't lower our costs. As a matter of fact, the unit that we're putting in burns natural gas, and it will create an issue where we raise our cost as a function of burning the natural gas in the new unit. So, I think I addressed your question on the replacement unit. This is not a replacement. It's a heater unit that we will use in addition to the combustion unit. This heater unit will not burn anything except natural gas, and it will heat the asphalt, which will make the combustion unit more efficient, because we take the asphalt out of the combustion unit and move it to the heater.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions? Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, so one question I had when I was reading that packet, it said that the higher temperature would substantially increase the efficiency of the combustion process, which would in turn significantly reduce asphalt odors at the plant. I don't see how A equals B, so can you explain the science behind how increasing the efficiency of the combustion process would actually reduce the asphalt odors?
We have a unit that combusts the fumes that we put in it from our process. The fumes come over into the bottom of this unit, they go up through the unit, and they're combusted as they move up through the unit. This is the, what we call the combustion unit. It's called a petrochem, but it's the combustion unit. As these fumes travel up through the unit, currently, we have asphalt in tubes running through that unit. We have a minimum temperature which we must maintain by permit in that unit to burn the fumes. We also put asphalt through it to heat. We will overheat our asphalt in that unit now, and keep our temperatures at the permitted level. If we take the asphalt out of this unit, move it to a heater, where we don't have those concerns, we can turn the combustion unit and the flame height up to whatever we want. We have a minimum temperature we have to maintain, but we can go as high as we want in that combustion unit, and raise the flame level in that unit, so we can burn more efficiently and more area.
Okay, and I'm sorry, this isn't my area of expertise here, but, so you're burning fumes?
Yes.
And that doesn't create even more of a yucky fume situation?
We're burning fumes in the combustion unit.
But, I mean, are there other more filters? I mean, what's it doing, other than kicking it up higher, the higher flume?
No. I apologize, but I think we're confusing the 71-foot stack with the 53-stack. In the 71-foot stack that we have the conditional use permit applied for, we are not burning anything. We're only heating asphalt. We're only heating asphalt, and that's currently being done in the combustion unit, which helps, which keeps us from raising the temperature in the combustion unit, because we overheat the processed asphalt. We can't use it in our process if we overheat it. So, we maintain a permitted level of temperature in that combustion unit. If we take the asphalt out of that unit and move it to the heater solely, we can ramp the temperature up in the combustion unit, or raise the flame, so that the temperature is more consistent, even as it goes up toward the stack and out of the stack.
Okay, but how does that reduce odors? And I'm sorry, I didn't mean this in my last question. How does that reduce the odor of the asphalt, whether it's...
We burn the constituents of the fumes, which are causing the odors. There's more time, there's more time elapsed as those odors flow through, and hotter temperatures. We burn more constituents as they go through the system.
Commissioner Gisselman, do you have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, just kind of a follow-up, just for understanding. So, it sounds like you've already been, you're currently burning these fumes now, but you're planning to do it in a different way, or a more efficient method with this second stack?
Correct.
Do you, according to what you're telling us, it sounds like you don't believe that there's going to be increased output. You're just doing what you're doing now in a different way. Is that fair?
That is correct. This doesn't, this doesn't allow us to increase output at all. Our output is dictated by the amount of asphalt we use. This will not give us the ability to use more asphalt. This is simply an odor mitigation issue.
And you said this, but the reason for this application, just to be clear, is to deal with the existing complaints about odor that...
That is correct.
Commissioner Slack.
Another follow-up question. Can you potentially explain to me a process of how you would be using the 53 in conjunction with the 71?
Yes. We will use the 53-foot unit as we use it now, but it will be used to solely burn the fumes. Right now, it does both. It heats the asphalt as it burns the fumes. In a series of tubes, coils that go around the 53-foot, we circulate asphalt, so it actually heats the asphalt as it burns the fumes. We're going to take those coils out of that 53-foot unit and make it nothing but a combustion chamber. It will serve no other purpose. We will install this heater with coils in it to circulate our asphalt through that unit, so that the 53-foot unit, which now serves a dual purpose, burning fumes and heating asphalt, will solely be for the purpose of burning fumes. It will allow us to turn the temperature up, to adjust the flame heights, to get more dwell time of the fumes in that unit, without overheating our asphalt.
Are there any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Gagnon?
Thank you. Just to clarify, the 71-foot that burns the asphalt, that doesn't create any smell?
No, ma'am. That burns natural gas.
Okay, so there'll be no smell coming out of the...
No, that, it's a, this unit...
Or no bad stuff?
I'm sorry?
No bad stuff coming out, chemicals, smell?
Well, it burns natural gas. The permitting regulations, I believe, on that unit are, city requirements are for anything over 10 million BTU. This is not that big a unit, so no.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions for the applicant, we can continue on with other speakers. Is there anyone else? Just so I have a sense, who else in the audience would like to speak on this item? Okay, there are several of you. So, we can move on to other speakers. I will ask that you keep your remarks to approximately two minutes each. So, the first speaker can come to the microphone, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Nancy Prismas. I represent Botno Neighborhood Association, I'm their staff person. I'm here to talk specifically to why we shouldn't have a conditional use permit for an additional stack. As of March of this year, we were promised by March 15th that the new $500,000 improvement was going to change the burning in the current 53-foot stack, and that the odors would be mitigated, because it was going to be higher burning temperatures, and it was going to be better. Well, it actually got worse. If anything, the belching of the toxic fumes is increased. So, now this is another way to measure, we are trying to measure what is coming out of that stack. So, the city and MPCA has been working with the neighborhood group, and with Eastside Quality of Life, and with the four neighborhoods adjacent to the GAF plant, and we have made progress where we're actually getting air samples that can be tested, but they can't, the test results won't be due until October. So, any change right now, we have to measure it on the fence line at the Lowry Avenue Bridge. That's where we're measuring and taking air samples. And we're also taking air samples when the belching occurs, which is intermittent, and at night often. So, we have to run over there with air sampling things that have been given to us through the MPCA and the Minneapolis Department of Health to test this. Any change right now in all these heights and everything is going to change our air monitoring and make our samples invalid. And we ask that you not approve this until the fence line testing can be done, so we can prove from the source where these chemicals are coming from, because their current permit only, does not measure gases, does not measure benzene and formaldehyde, and the 82 toxins that the MPCA have told us that can be coming from burning asphalt fumes into our neighborhoods. Those 82, those 82 fumes and toxins are carcinogens and cause asthma. And we're in the middle of this testing. We would ask you commissioners, please do not make any changes or allow any conditional use permits until our testing is complete, so we know how to hold the company accountable.
That's two minutes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dave Eugenaro, 2522 Grand Street Northeast, and I submitted a letter on behalf of the Marshall Terrace Neighborhood, so I think you've already read that. I would just like to say that our biggest statement that we want to make you aware of, or that our issue is kind of what you were talking about, the odor is one thing, the odor is overwhelming, powerful, gives people headaches, sore throats. We want to know what's causing the odor. What is, what are they burning? He had, you had asked him, he said natural gas, but the natural gas is burning something. What is being burned? That's what we want to find out before anything moves forward with this. We want to know what we're breathing in as these fumes drift across the river. I'll keep that short. Thank you. these fumes drift across the river. I'll keep that short. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Would anyone else like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Philip Harder. I live across the river from the plant, 2204 Marshall Street Northeast. We moved to our house and then we moved two doors down in 1998. We've been smelling these fumes in our house ever since. We've done various neighborhood activities to try to make people aware where the fumes were coming from. Once we found out, about 10, 12 years ago, we actually put out flyers to say, "If you smell this asphalt stink, call your environmental agencies." And the complaints quickly rose because people never knew where that stink was coming from. People lived there for decades. Oh, that's just northeast Minneapolis. But it's also wafts into north Minneapolis. It wafts anywhere that the wind takes it. We were on the river just three days ago and we were upriver slightly from the plant, and once again, we smelled it. There it is. We can't close our windows necessarily in the summer, and it does really smell bad. 10 years ago, we had a meeting due to these flyers we put up because they thought, "Well, maybe there's more complaints because we're doing something wrong." Well, it was just, we were organized. And now we're organized again with social media. And so a lot more complaints are coming through because people are aware and they're complaining vigorously. We were told by GAF 10 years ago that they would solve it through some investment. Nothing happened. They bought time. Last year, we had a meeting about this again due to our 3-1-1 complaints. And as they said, they made $500,000 investments.
Thirty seconds.
No improvement. We're very cautious about what they're proposing this time around because we've been lied to for myself 12 years now. Lied literally as in they said they would improve and they didn't. So what happens if these two years go by when they build this and the stink is still there? They've just bought two more years. I feel that they should be moved out of this area and not given a permit to do any more polluting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm David Somala. I live at 2208 Marshall Street Northeast. I just want to read something I saw on the master plan. It'll be very short, but it says, I'm sorry, the Above the Falls Master Plan. "Conflicts between some heavy industries and nearby properties are unavoidable given the nature of these operations. While these businesses provide needed services to society, the plan confirms that the Upper River is too valuable and too close to existing neighborhoods and the heart of the city for this land use to continue indefinitely. A transition to light industry and other land uses is recommended." And when I hear this proposal, bigger stacks, bigger flames, bigger gas, I think we're moving in the wrong direction. I also want to echo what Phil said. I was at those meetings 10 or 12 years ago, or whatever it was, when the plant manager at the time, Eric Pirana, came in and said, "Oh, yeah, we're going to fix it. We're investing a million dollars." Nothing changed. Again, we had the same thing this year. Now I see this proposal, that $500,000 one, and this new proposal, we see another thing where we won't get any results for two years, according to what I understand, that it won't be completed until 2017. So it's, again, as Phil mentioned, I echo that. It feels like they're buying time. I also would like to know, is there any evidence at all based, I mean, in light of these experiences, is there any evidence that what they're planning is going to work? Or are we just, is this just another, going to be another failed attempt at remediating this problem? That's it. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Anna Bearbrower, 2401 Marshall Street Northeast. I'm also on the Above the Falls Committee Advisory and submitted a letter in opposition. And I would like to state also what Dave Somala just said, that this is not the highest and best use of our riverfront and national park recreation area. It's moving away from what we would like to see at the Above the Falls Community Advisory Committee. And then also, as a Marshall resident, and I am very downwind with a park across the street. I really love my neighborhood. I love the location, but on a regular basis, these fumes force me inside, force me to close my windows. I also have two very small children. You've probably heard. And two years is a long time in the development of a child, in the development of vulnerable people. These are neighborhoods. These are all located in neighborhoods that have a higher population of low-income minority populations and children under 18. These are the most vulnerable people in Minneapolis and we're taking on a greater burden right now. And again, what we have seen in the last year, I've been a Marshall, Botno resident for the last eight years, once this has really gotten worse in the last three years, there has not been improvement in the last three months as we were promised. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Amanda Winterer. I own a home at 2322 Second Street Northeast. As a member of the Board of the Botno Neighborhood Association, a homeowner and a Realtor in the area, I request that you deny their request to build the 71-foot stack. I haven't seen any improvements over the last several months. My concern is less with the fumes and the smell than with what's actually coming out of it. To date, they haven't provided us with information regarding that, and I am really concerned about what's being let out into our air in our residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Susan Armington. I'm an artist and I have a studio in the California Building on 2205 California Street Northeast. And I know about this problem because I myself began to experience really terrible symptoms last summer, last fall. I felt so ill in my studio. I thought I was going to vomit. I had no idea why. I went home and I talked to other people in the building, and people pointed me to GAF and to this problem. So I began to talk to other people here. I've done a little bit of research. What I find disturbs me because I don't think it's clear what is coming out of those stacks and what is being spread across the city and across the river. I think that's really important, and why don't we know? I think it's urgent. So I'm going to read my statement and then I'm going to sit down. "A higher smoke stack is not going to ensure the air is any cleaner for the people of Minneapolis, only that whatever is in the emissions will be spread more widely and be more difficult to measure and monitor, since it will not show up as much on the MPC monitors placed near the Lowry Avenue Bridge. Further, any gases and fumes will also be more widely dispersed and difficult to measure. On the other hand, by permitting this new super-high stack, we lose the chance to find out what the particulates and fumes GAF is emitting into the air are and in what frequency. All the data, like the emissions, will be spread out across the metropolitan area. Better to wait on the smoke stack until sufficient data is collected by the MPC, which has just begun to monitor the situation more closely due to citizen complaints." And I think it's really critical that we don't understand what this process is and what the results of it will be. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Paul Helgeson. I live at 401 South First Street. I'm in Representative Frye's neighborhood. And I used to live on Marshall Avenue, so I have some firsthand experience with these noxious gases. I'm also a boater. I have a boat on the river, and it impedes me from using the river. And I think, as many of the previous speakers have said, this is not in accordance to the Above the Falls Plan. It derails the monitoring efforts. There's other issues with the aesthetics. If there's a 72-foot stack there, what does it do to the appearance of the Lowry Avenue Bridge, which is a very pleasing structure? And finally, I just want to say it affects the greater community. I live in the River West Building. I'm on the fifth floor. And the night of the All-Star Game last summer, I could smell the toxic fumes from GAF here downtown, a few blocks from this building. This is a bigger problem than just northeast. This is about Minneapolis and the reputation and what we want to do with the river. What is our stewardship of this treasured national park that we have custody over? And I would strongly urge you to vote against this position.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Wittenberg, do you have something to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just a reminder that, to the commission and to the public, that this isn't the body that regulates industrial air emissions. Certainly you're not obligated to approve the application that's in front of you, but just a reminder that the application that's in front of you is a conditional use permit to increase height. So you are obligated to analyze that specific request within the context of the findings in front of you.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any further questions of staff or of the applicant? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. President. I may have missed this because I stepped out for a moment, but did staff present information about some of these health impacts on the measurement study that's happening and what the next steps of that may be?
No, I don't have a lot of information on that. And as Mr. Wittenberg said, we did that analysis based on the proposed height, which is triggering the conditional use permit, and I defer to the applicant for any of the questions about their long-term plans and mitigation efforts.
Thank you. And Mr. President, do you know, okay, so is this new use regulated by a different body? Does it need a permit? Are there any other steps in approval other than the conditional use permits for the tower?
As far as I know, I know that our environmental health folks have been in contact with the applicant a number of times. And so this is truly a response to conversations with the city. And I'm not sure whether permits would be necessary to approve the additional stack. I'm not sure.
Commissioner Gagnon.
Thank you. So what would be, so you wouldn't know then the repercussion if, would there be any harm in waiting for data to come back? So then we have a baseline to determine whether this stack really does what it says it's going to do.
Are you proposing to continue the item to gather more information, or are you proposing a condition of approval? Just to clarify-
Well, I would say continue because if you have information that you've collected and it'll be invalid if this is done, but that information could help us assure that this is, this stack is doing what the applicant said it's supposed to do. And the neighborhood and the environmental agency has gone through this effort to collect samples and so forth. It just seems like, I'm stunned that our environmental agency doesn't know what's coming out of this. I don't know how they measure something they don't know. But I just think if you've already started a process to figure that out, the city and the neighborhood, it seems odd to interrupt that process and make it invalid. I'm just trying to-
This is the first time I've heard of that. That process has been brought to my attention. The applicant has stated that this is an effort to try to get rid of the odor problem right now. So I don't know if I'm in the position to analyze or to make a recommendation whether it's better to move forward or to wait for that testing to be done. I don't think I'm in that position to see.
Well, I think the argument is validity. So they've said that before, and this is a way for us to measure that it's actually happening.
Mr. Wittenberg, do you have anything to add to that?
Commissioners, you certainly have the ability to continue this. We have time under the 60-day law. We can extend it an additional 60 days. Just be cautious of requesting information that will lead us down the path of getting outside the scope of analysis of a conditional use permit to increase height, but certainly you can request additional information.
And if I may interrupt, I believe that the Botno Neighborhood mentioned October as the end date for the study. Is that correct?
That's when the first-
So that might have an impact, and that would be well outside of the 120-day rule?
That is when the first results will be back from the city health department's testing. They told us that last Monday night at the environmental justice meeting on the North Side.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lukey-Pierre and then-
Actually, I have a question, ma'am, real quick. So the first test gets back in October. What is the full extent timeline-wise of the study that's being done?
We are currently set aside more money to get more determined testing. In addition to what the city health department has done, Botno has set aside many thousands of dollars to pay for testing, enhanced testing.
What's the proposed timeline of that?
We could get it done in a couple of weeks, but the city doesn't have the money and the things. And GAF's permit is due in September.
So in theory, though, through the end of the year would be sufficient enough time for you?
I believe we could by 12:3115 have the data we need to prove the source problem.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to Mr. Wittenberg's point here and just to try to refocus the conversation. So we are being asked to approve the stack which is being proposed in order to solve the odor problem. But I think we are all very sympathetic to these bigger questions about the air pollution, air quality, and other concerns that are being raised. And so I'm struggling a bit with the extent to which this stack would preclude there to be further study of the air quality issues. Maybe the applicant could help us understand more about any studies that are happening that you're aware of and how this stack may or may not allow them to continue. I would think perhaps they could still happen, if this is specifically about the odors, that the emissions could be tested either before they go into the stack or perhaps the new emissions from this stack could be tested. So-
Not to confuse things further, but the 71-foot stack is a heater. It will have literally no emissions, no burned fumes. The petrochem unit, the 53-foot stack, will continue to burn all the fumes. We will simply be able to turn up the heat, extend the flame, heat the entire combustion unit, and have more heat to burn the fumes and to burn constituents. So as far as a baseline, you have a baseline now. Our activity is aimed at one thing, and that's aimed at mitigating the complaints that you've heard from this group of people. That's our sole purpose in this activity. It was our sole purpose to help mitigate complaints with the $500,000. This is an additional step of another million, million-three, actually, when you include the expense portion of it. So this is a step to improve the odor situation and the relations with the neighborhood.
All right. Commissioners, are there any other questions or discussion on this?
Well, one other thing. You do realize that we are monitored by the state and we are regulated by the state. We're monitored by your own environmental agency here in the city. We work with them very closely, and we have yet to have a violation.
And maybe to that point, you could explain just briefly, what sort, is there any permitting through the state that is required for this unit in specific, just since that question had arisen?
No. This is, to the best of my knowledge, no, this is a heater. This is not a combustion unit. We will not be burning emissions in this unit. No. To answer a question that was raised a minute ago, not to confuse things further, but in the heater, the asphalt is contained in a tube, a coiled tube. So the asphalt is not released into this heater at all. It simply rotates around and goes back to a storage tank, and we can control the heat of the asphalt this way. So it's not burning anything.
Commissioner Lukey-Pierre.
So just really quickly then, if you're monitored by the state, what exactly are they monitoring and how are they monitoring? Are they looking at plume studies or what? Where do they gather their data?
We take stack tests, analyze stack tests. The city in particular, who has been the one that has been the real bird dog on this issue, has done all sorts of monitoring. As one of the speakers said, they call, you know, the city will be called out, so they'll come out on specific occasions when it's a stronger or more intense smell. So the city regularly goes out to monitor complaints in parts of the city. They stand on the bridge. They, you know, they come to the property line, to the fence, and they analyze the odor that is emanating from the facility.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Ms. Anderson, you said that our environmental health staff had been involved in this discussion. Is that correct? They've been facilitating-
I've only heard that kind of- I've only heard that kind of through the grapevine. I haven't had direct conversations with that department.
All right.
All right. If there are no further questions, would someone like to start us off with a motion or is there additional discussion? Well, the public hearing is closed now, so we need to move on here. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will move approval of the conditional use permit as per staff's recommendation.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, again, here, the very narrow question in front of us is really about the appropriateness of height in an industrially zoned district, and I think a lot of the questions that have been raised here are really important ones that I know our staff and the elected official will be happy to follow up on. So, you know, that's why I'm supporting the CUP here, but not to say that there isn't need for further discussion about this issue.
Commissioner Gisselman and then Commissioner Lukey here.
And I was just gonna, I'm gonna support this, and I wanted to, you know, again, just make sure that, I mean, those of you in this room who have voiced concerns about, you know, what is coming out of this existing stack, I mean, I think that that's totally legitimate. As Minneapolis residents, we should all be concerned about the quality of our air. Just wanted to be clear, I'm not supporting this because certainly we would support dirty air or dangerous air, but again, you know, what is before us is certainly not shutting this operation down. And everything that we've heard from the applicant is that they're not creating a second stack to create more emissions and that their intention is to try to address some of these concerns. Whether that's true or not, I know that many of you, I'm sure, are very skeptical about that, remains to be seen, and I think that's why the effort of monitoring and working with the MPCA should continue. But I think that if we denied this application based on concerns over the cleanliness of what's coming out of the existing stack, which would continue anyway, even if we denied this application, I think that this body then would be venturing down a path of which I don't think it has purview over.
Commissioner Lukey.
Yeah, I will be voting against the motion for today, and I wanted to kind of address why. I think, first of all, in terms of conditional use permits, does not meet all the required findings, specifically, four of them actually. Finding number two, that it won't be dangerous to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity, and will not impede the normal and orderly development or improvement of surrounding property. I think, obviously, because it's stated by the testimony given today, but also because it seems as though it might affect the study that's being done now in terms of creating an accurate baseline, that it would have a direct impact on their enjoyment of the property. I think it affects number five, is it consistent with the applicable policies of the comp plan? I think that furthering something that's not in performance with future land use is not consistent with the future vision for the above-the-falls plan. I also think that when we look at additional standards to increase maximum height, finding number one is access to light and air of surrounding properties, and I would point out that a lot of this has to do with air quality. So although we can't regulate through this body the emissions coming out, we do have a say in things that a reasonable person could infer would have an impact on air quality. And since this is specifically being done supposedly doubling the allowable height in the area as a result of air quality issues, I would think that we could pay keen attention to that one. And lastly, limiting the visibility of structures or other development from protected waters. I just want to point out that this one is relevant only because, not what was included in the staff report, but what was missing, which in my observation seemed somewhat disingenuous in terms of their willingness to actually create cleaner air. I saw no evidence of any passive means of even air quality improvement. There's not a single tree that I could find on the site. And one of the requirements of the conditional use permit is that it has to bring the property up to standards, including site standards, and those require trees, boulevard trees, planting shrubbery, landscaping. And I realize that they're in an industrial area and that there's a bridge, that they're actually under the level of the bridge in terms of elevation and height, but I don't see any effort made to try and screen the neighborhood from seeing that through the use of taller trees, some of which could actually do quite a bit to mitigate air quality issues. I don't see any attempt to make any sort of nod to the riverfront in terms of perhaps offering alternative compliance to the landscaping requirements around the parking by proposing to put them along the riverfront to serve as a buffer, but also as a way to beautify the riverfront. And given that that's an area of town that's been often neglected, I think that that speaks volumes in terms of the willingness to actually take seriously the concerns that the neighbors have regarding the air quality there and breathing and their children are being raised in. So I will not be voting in support of the motion, and in fact, if it failed, I would be in support of a denial of this conditional use permit for those reasons.
Commissioner Gagnon, please note applause. Commissioner Gagnon.
So this is being solely brought to us to change air quality, and I guess my biggest concern is that the applicant hasn't done anything to show us how they will prove that the air quality will change. And I know that we are not over air quality, but if it's for the sole purpose of that, and that's why we're approving a height variance, it seems to me that it would have behooved the applicant to actually show that they've been measuring and that they are going to prove to the neighborhood, like they would take that upon themselves or collect the data. So I will also be voting no.
All right. Commissioner Lukey.
I just had one more comment I wanted to address because Commissioner Bender had a question about whether or not this would affect the measurement of the particulates in the air, and I think it would if you've done a study and you want to take an air sample study. You want to consistently do it with the same variables in place in terms of things that are outputting the fumes and things that are where you're collecting it from. And if you changed it by adding an additional 20 to 30 feet in height, it would definitely cause an effect on the outgoing plume, which would affect the air samples that were gathered. So I just think, I haven't fully been convinced that we can burn our way to cleaner air, and given that, I think we should let them get at least a base level established so we can see what the progress is going forward. There's nothing to prohibit this from coming back next year or after December to see if it does make an improvement then.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seem done. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
No.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Lukey here?
No.
Slack?
No.
So that is two yeses, three noes.
Right, and that motion fails. Would someone like to make an alternate motion? Commissioner Lukey here.
I'll move to deny the application for a conditional use permit based on the findings I cited earlier.
All right. Is there a second? Further discussion on that motion? And Commissioner Lukey here made some findings in her previous comments. In that case, clerk, please call the roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Gisselman?
No.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
No.
So that's three yeses, two noes.
Okay, and that motion carries. And Mr. Wittenberg, did we adequately address some findings for that denial?
Certainly, commissioners are welcome to add to that, but I assume that Commissioner Lukey here's findings were thorough.
All right. Motion carries, and that concludes our business on that item. Our next item for discussion is item number nine, 100 Washington Avenue South, some modifications to an office building there. And Ms. Steiner is staff.
Evening, commissioners. The proposal tonight is at 100 Washington Avenue South. The proposal is to enclose a portion of an existing open-air first floor, reconstruct a plaza area, and install a new sign. There are three applications required for this proposal. The first is a variance of the plaza development standards. The second is a variance of maximum sign area for a freestanding sign. And third is site plan review for an approximately 4,000-square-foot addition. So the site location, only a few blocks away. So the property at 100 Washington Avenue South comprises four blocks found by Washington Avenue South, Marquette, South Second Avenue, and Second Street South. As you can see from the aerial, there's many multifamily residential towers and other office buildings in the immediate vicinity. The building, the existing building, has a somewhat unique design, which you can tell from this picture. It's a 22-story office tower that essentially sits on stilts, so the first floor, or it's designed to sort of look like it, sits on stilts with, so the first floor is a 40-foot open-air plaza area with a smaller lobby core. There's planter walls that wrap the perimeter of the building envelope. You can tell from this aerial, so there's a significant amount of plaza that's under the building in that open-air plaza area. These are the planter walls that wrap the perimeter. There's a large landscaped area that separates the existing building from the onsite commercial parking lot, which fronts on Second Street South, which was vacated in the 1980s, but still looks and essentially functions as a public street. So the project includes enclosing an approximately 4,000-square-foot portion of that open-air first floor, extending the building towards Washington. And the other parts of the project are based on a need to waterproof the entire site, so they're pulling up basically all of the surface materials on the site and replacing them, reconstructing the plaza with new materials and amenities. It also, the project also requires the removal of all the trees and landscaping and then replacement. So I'll go through the land use applications one by one. So first, the variance of the plaza standards. So the zoning code has general standards for plazas, including seating, landscaping, amenities for plazas, lighting, among other things. These are typically administratively reviewed unless there's a variance required, so that's why you're seeing that tonight. So the standards that are not being met by the current proposal are for a required amount of seating and required number of trash receptacles. So the area that you'll see highlighted in yellow is, is what? Is the plaza area on this site? So the site is a full block. It's a significant-sized plaza. It's 42,855 square feet, so just under an acre. You can point out, so these are the stilts of the building, so that's how much plaza is under the building, and then that's the lobby core and the proposed addition, sorry. So the seating required for plazas is one linear foot per 50 square feet of plaza. So of this, 20% has to be seating that has a back, and 20% has to be fixed seating. So the seating requirement for this plaza would be 857 linear feet, linear feet of plaza, I mean of seating. The applicant is proposing only 221 linear feet of seating on the plaza, and this seating is concentrated in this area, and this area is below, under the building. There's some informal seating on those existing planter walls that they're also counting, but for the most part, this more public area has no seating. So if the area, sorry, lost my place. So in staff analysis in the staff report, staff found that there is a practical difficulty in complying fully with the ordinance based on the significant size of the plaza, considering the unique circumstance of the design of the building with the first floor being raised up so high and so much of the plaza actually sitting below the building, which is somewhat unique. However, more seating could practically be accommodated on this large plaza. So if the area that is interior to the planter walls that wrap the perimeter of the building were not taken into account, which would be this area in blue, so outside of these planter wall perimeters, if you were to only count that portion for the plaza, then the requirement would be reduced to 321 linear feet of seating. So that is what staff is recommending. Staff's recommending approval of the variance for the total required number of seating, but the condition of approval, which requires 321, which would be for that portion. We're also encouraging but not requiring that the applicant incorporate more seating along the public right-of-way and at the main pedestrian entrances, which have been identified on the site plan, as here, here, and here. And then in terms of trash receptacles, because of the large size of the plaza, the requirement for number of trash receptacles would be 22. So staff thought that because of large size was kind of skewing the requirement, the proposal that the applicant came up with, which was four of each, was reasonable. So we're recommending approval of that. Next, there's a sign variance. So the applicant is proposing a, it's a little dark, but a 120-square-foot freestanding sign. So that 120 square feet is drawn around the letters, and then this wall that it sits on is about 50 feet long, and total height, it would be five feet, or five feet, seven inches. So in the downtown districts, freestanding signs are limited to only 32 square feet, so the proposal is almost four times what would be allowed. Staff did not find that the property has any unique identification needs that necessitate a sign that would be larger than what would be allowed by the zoning code. The property has adequate visibility, both to pedestrians and vehicles, and all properties in downtown districts are subject to the same requirement for freestanding signs. So staff did not find that the findings required to grant variance for the sign could be met, and we're recommending denial of that variance. Then finally, site plan review. I'm just going to focus on the items that needed alternative compliance and then came up as conditions of approval, but feel free to ask questions about anything else. Going back to the site plan, the first item that needs alternative compliance is pedestrian access. So at least four-foot walkways are required, and while there are walkways from the public sidewalk to the building, there's not a clear and unobstructed walkway from the public sidewalk to the onsite parking back towards Second Street. The applicant, though there's approximately six feet of space along, so this is Second Street South, so there's approximately six feet of space between the parking area and the curb, there's multiple steel railings and light poles that are in the way, so you only really have two feet of space to walk, and you kind of have to zigzag around. The applicant is proposing to retain these steel railings in place and add a vinyl mesh screen, which I'll explain in a bit, but it got passed around, too. So those would be added to the steel railings. So the walkway would remain obstructed, and there would be no clear and unobstructed walkway from the public sidewalk to the parking area. Staff does not recommend that the planning commission grant alternative compliance for the standard, and instead recommends that the steel railings that exist are, be removed to allow for an at least four-foot wide walkway. And then the next item that needs alternative compliance, you're probably very familiar with the, our standards for when parking fronts along a public street, seven-foot-wide landscaped yard is required with screening at least three feet high and 60% opaque. The applicant is not proposing a landscaped yard along the parking lot frontage on Second Avenue or Marquette. They are proposing to, there's some existing tree grates, and they're proposing for the trees that have died to replace them. So they're proposing three trees along each frontage on those public streets. And then their screening proposal includes retaining the existing steel railings that are along there and then putting the vinyl mesh screening. So here's a detail you probably saw on your packet. So they would take the steel railings, build a frame around the vinyl mesh screening. First, the vinyl material is not durable and would not meet the zoning code requirements for fence material. Secondly, this material is more often seen as like temporary construction site screening and does not meet the intent of the ordinance to screen parking areas, and certainly the intent of our policies, which aim to mitigate the visual impact of parking areas or parking facilities. Also, considering that there's nearly 16 feet of space between the parking area and the property line, staff found that it was reasonable and that trees are already proposed there, staff found that it was reasonable to require a seven-foot landscaped yard in this area with screening three feet high and 60% opaque, as would normally be required. So staff does not recommend that you grant alternative compliance for that item as well. Finally, parking and loading abutting a permitted residential use also needed alternative compliance. So where parking abuts a permitted residential use, a seven-foot landscaped yard, and a three-foot-high 95% opaque screen is required. It's kind of odd because Second Street was vacated, but this property line is actually adjacent to the Churchill Towers property line, so it's technically adjacent to a permitted residential use and therefore is, has those screening requirements. So here, the applicant is again proposing to retain the existing steel railings but install the vinyl mesh product with the faux landscaping design on the railings to provide screening. Again, the vinyl doesn't meet our requirements and/or our intent for screening. Staff is recommending, though, that the planning commission grant some flexibility considering the fact that while it's technically adjacent to a permitted residential use, Second Street essentially looks like a public street, and there is some separation between the uses. So the typical requirement for parking fronting along a street, which is three feet high and 60% opaque, seemed reasonable. Additionally, there would not be enough space to maintain both a seven-foot landscaped yard and a four-foot walkway, as we had recommended. So staff is recommending that the planning commission grant alternative compliance for the width of the landscaped yard, but not the screening. Instead, in this area, staff's recommending, again, that the steel railings be removed and that screening is incorporated in that area. So I think that covers it. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for us? Seeing done, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, if they are present. And if you could, please focus your presentation on some of your concerns with the staff recommendation on those specific site issues. And please state your name and address for the record.
Jason Stiefel, Shea Design, project architect. I guess there's three things to kind of go through here. We'll just start from the beginning with the seating extent. Just as Lisa explained, the existing site is obviously unique. Currently, there is no seating provided in the plaza area. It was an atypical design at the time. It's remained that same way to date. Everything that we're proposing here is to enhance that experience from primarily a tenant perspective. We don't see this as being used primarily as a public park or facility where a lot of the general public will, will come onto the site. This is primarily being introduced to add amenities for the tenants in the building. And maybe let's go through, as with the seating here, you know, we're proposing to kind of create some different seating nodes adjacent to the new lobby enclosure, so a mix of movable tables and chairs, a new pergola element, which creates kind of a distinct node for gathering space with a variety of different seating types, more lounge and informal style, and also a bar area, which creates more of a higher booth sort of design. And just kind of moving throughout the site up here, there's different amenities that are being introduced in the plaza that creates a variety for the user experience. So this is a Zen garden that's being added to the front corner, which is not intended for seating, it's more of just a focal element to the site. As we move over here, there's additional seating that's cited as being movable, so again, creating flexibility for the tenants and how they can use the space. We're also introducing some fixed benches here with some perch tables, so people can view the bocce court as its own amenity space. Moving over to the side here, the rest of the plaza area, for the most part, is geared towards bike rack storage or else future bike lockers. And everything is kept in mind with how will tenants use this space when they come onto the site if they're using a bike to enter, and what is kind of that circulation path? How do we keep it open? How do we keep it flexible from that perspective? But still introduce different seating nodes. And there's some open areas here, but that's to allow for better circulation of bikes throughout the site, because we are somewhat restricted with access from Washington Avenue because of the stairs coming up and then the existing stairs over to Second. So flow from a bike standpoint is restricted, but we're also accommodating for that. So we're keeping areas open over here as well. We have discovered some reusable pieces of furniture that we're proposing to be added here. These are elements that have been found elsewhere on the site that we're proposing to reuse. I have some pictures here. So currently, these are some additional elements we're looking at relocating to be introduced into these areas that are highlighted in yellow. So this would provide an additional 28 linear feet of seating. I know that we're short, I think, 100 linear feet or so, but this is another element that's introducing some seating over on this side of the plaza area. We also see, let me expand back out here, this plan probably shows it better. Again, working with the existing site, it's limiting, but it also provides some nice opportunities. This large area to the north is currently just an existing planter area with grass and large trees. It has to be removed due to waterproofing concerns, but we're reintroducing new vegetation where we can, enhancing that experience, but also bringing back that large grassy area to provide kind of a informal gathering space for tenants. Just citing a similar example here, being proposed the Downtown East Commons Development, I believe. So similar idea here, where there's a large grassy area just for informal gathering. This is an amenity that we're offering on the site that is outside of the plaza, as you see it, but still it provides kind of that nice mix of variety of seating areas. So I think this in combination with everything else is striving to meet the intent of what the seating requirements are going for. I know the initial calcs required some sort of seating total close to 850-plus linear feet. Obviously, that's excessive for this use here, but we feel that what we're proposing here is appropriate for the scale of the building, the tenants using it, and it's appropriate for managing the furniture and also controlling how people use seating on the site.
Ronnie Raygoff. My address is 850 Third Avenue, New York, with the Schornstein Company, the owners of the project. If you look at the, this isn't just a grass, this is a knoll. We also have a grassy knoll in the front over here, so this allows people to, in the nicer weather, to just hang and not have to formally sit. We're trying to attract tenants that are more tech tenants, so it's all Wi-Fi, so that people can go outside and just sort of relax and do things. We have a fire pit here, so if it's cold, you might be able to sit out here a little bit longer than normal in the season. I know that the staff had recommended seating here. The parapet is way too high to have seating. It must be, what, four feet?
Well, yeah, it varies. So basically, on this side of Washington Avenue, it's a manageable height that's actually about 18 inches. It's about seat height, and that's what we identified here on the plan. But as, as you move to the east, the site drops, and once you get over towards the stairs and especially around the corner, you're three, four feet plus, so it's not practical from a seating standpoint.
And we're also not looking for people to just sort of hang on the outskirts. We want to sort of control the use and make it a positive amenity for the people in the project.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Lukey, here you have a question for the applicant.
Yeah, I had a question since you've been speaking about seating. I take it this is in regard to your variance request for the seating?
Yes.
And the staff report's saying not less than 221 linear feet, and given that that height is different, what number are you proposing to actually provide?
What we have currently shown on the plan that was submitted was 221 linear feet, but with the addition of the seating that I highlighted here, which has been, oh, sorry, the additional seating elements, that would add another 28 linear feet that we can kind of maneuver around the site as needed, you know, whatever that total is.
So 249 linear feet of seating?
Yeah, yeah. And then also including kind of that large planter area, which you can't quantify that, but you know, that's intended for informal seating as well, the grassy area.
Okay, and then can you speak to the variance for the sign and the site plan review?
Yeah, so a lot of these variance requests are coming from the existing building design, and like I said before, the limitations of that. The building, as we've discussed earlier, this is the core of the existing building. It's set back substantially from the street, 40, 50 feet plus. Building's elevated. There's no real opportunity for applying signage to this building, especially with the glass enclosure that we're introducing. The appropriate setting for that is over here at the corner, and this is where the existing monument sign is today. It's approximately right here, and it's a vertical pylon element. We're proposing to eliminate that sign and introduce it here in more of a horizontal manner that becomes more artistic. It's simply the building name itself, 100 Washington Square, in individually mounted letters that you can see through, and as that image, I need to find it, wherever that As we, as we tried to demonstrate here, I don't know if I'm familiar with how to zoom this in, but as we demonstrated here, this is a mock-up of the 120-square-foot building sign. And the reason why we arrived at that size is because it's in response to the building design, again, where even though the primary structure that comes above the ground is sitting back here, the primary foundation wall of the building is right here along, sorry, I'm not on the, on the screen. The primary foundation of the building wall is right out here along with the face of the planter wall. This is something that we're proposing to use as a reference point, where this wall that the sign will sit on is an extension of the building foundation wall. Because we don't have anything in a reasonable distance that is practical to place it where it's in a visible location, we're proposing to create an extension of the foundation wall where we can then place that. That, the approach here is it's building attached, which would justify why we're proposing the 120 square feet. Also, you know, keeping in mind that it could be considered a larger-sized sign for this area, there's ultimate transparency through the letters, and it becomes more artistic in nature. And I just wanted to reference a couple other examples that, that we're trying to key off of locally. This is the Ameriprise financial sign that I believe is on Seventh Street. This is a similar concept to what we're proposing here, individually mounted letters, becomes more artistic. I believe this sign is scaled about to 120 square feet. I don't know when this was approved, but I believe it was fairly recently. Building across the street from that is the Accenture Tower, which I believe that this sign is also exceeding the typical 32 square feet. And it's just, with unique sites, we try to create a unique solution that still keeps the intent of the code, also playing off something that's a little more artistic in nature, Gold Medal Park. This is obviously a different use, but the intent is still the same. The words for the, the location become the artistic piece and kind of define it. The sign on the corner also anchors the corner of the property. It becomes a strong element that defines that corner, because nothing is there from a building standpoint to date. Also, the wall that it's sitting on is acting as a berm for the landscaping behind it. So what we call out here, the berm lawn, so this is kind of undulating hills behind this wall, so it becomes more of a retaining wall in a certain sense at this point. So the wall is there for functional reasons. It's also there to create an anchor for the sign and feel more integrated on that, the corner aspect.
Anything, Steph?
No, I mean, also, all the landscaping that we're putting here on Washington Avenue, we're part of the six-block area that the cities or the counties is improving with all the landscaping. So we're making this an area that's going to be a lot of green, a lot of landscaping to attract or make it more attractive to the neighborhood, and so that people walking from one end of the city to the middle district will find this more of an enjoyable area. We're putting in a little coffee kiosk here so that the public can come through, sorry, I'm not praying there.
Yeah, we'll move it over here.
We're putting in a coffee kiosk so that, that, that people in the neighborhood can walk in and get coffee and there are places to sit outside and inside. That'll be open on Saturdays and, and if they want, on Sundays as well, for people to enjoy.
All right. Commissioner Slatt, do you have a question for the applicant?
Actually, perfect. Point of clarification, the area that's highlighted in blue, is that area that you actually have to do waterproofing on as well?
Yes, and that takes it up to the property line extent. And the reason is because of where I explained the foundation wall that's out at that point, you have to excavate out a certain distance to be able to get down to do the proper waterproofing repairs. And the proposed design from the waterproofing consultant is to add a lens, as they call it, which is basically a trough detail that's going to run parallel to the front planter wall that will collect water and divert it away from the building. There's substantial leaking that's happening there, so the extent in blue is what has to be removed to facilitate the waterproofing repairs.
So even though that, that the trough is, I'm guessing, closer to the building, you have to have your extents all the way out?
Correct. When you have to excavate down, whatever the distance is, I don't know for sure, maybe 10 feet plus, obviously, the angle, you excavate the soil to make it a safe condition, has to be cut back. And at some point, when you consider the Washington Avenue improvements, which are coming up to the property line, it doesn't make sense if you can save a sliver of old sidewalk to try and retain that if both sides are taking it out. So in our aspect here, you could maybe justify keeping about a two-foot sliver of the existing sidewalk, but by that time, from a visual standpoint, you would replace it all.
I would agree with you on the sidewalk. I guess the point of my question is more regarding the existing trees. You know, I don't know the, the exact condition of all the trees that surround at least the three sides on Marquette and that Second and then Washington, but I do know that they're, for the most part, they're very mature. Those trees have been there for a long time. Actually, I sometimes consider them a feat of engineering, because the way that they're planted leads you to believe that they wouldn't have survived and wouldn't have grown as big as they are, and it seems somewhat a shame that there wouldn't be a way to try and save some of them.
We had our landscape architects look into that, and the chances of taking them off and putting them back where they would live are very slim to nil, they told us. And that's why one of the things that we want to do is put back mature trees. I told them one of the things I don't want is like the little trees that the city often puts on the sidewalk. I want a tree that looks like what was there, but can remain. If you take a mature tree out, it'll go into shock, because this is going to take several months to, to do the project, and they probably will die.
I think, yeah, if your, your questions are regarding, let's say, on the Marquette side.
More so, I think, on the Second Avenue side.
Oh, on the Second Avenue side. Well, I think the case is still the same. It's the same species that was planted. This particular view, for example, you can see, if I can show that right, there's, that was an existing tree location that's died, it's had, had been cut down. This one next to it had been cut down. These other ones here seem to be managing okay. They're not as healthy as they should be. Part of the reason is the, the condition at the base, yeah, it's not allowing for a lot of water to actually get down there, and...
And the cement has choked a lot of the trees and the roots.
So our current design is still proposing to introduce trees back where they're being, where they currently exist today. So as you can see here, obviously, yeah, on the Second Avenue side, unfortunately, this is the primary wall of concern as well from a waterproofing standpoint, where with the excavations, there's just no way to save a tree. You know, jeopardize the root system, and it's not going to survive. So we're still introducing trees back in the same location where they are. That will be suitable for this setting.
Well, and I appreciate the, the comment on putting in more mature trees. Necessarily, that's not always a good planting strategy, just because of how long it takes to establish and get them to grow, but at least if they're going in bigger, you get more of an immediate impact, which even though there are trees on both those edges, the edges are still somewhat pretty harsh because the sidewalks are pretty wide there, and they're not actually at the street edge, they're, they're closer to the building edge. So I think that that's, that's a good response. As it relates to, to the signage and the wall, I like the wall. You know, I actually think that the wall goes towards this, this seating number, because it looks and appears to be sort of the height of a seat wall. And it helps kind of create that edge because of the placement of the building, there really isn't a strong street edge, traditional street edge. So I think with the wall and the plantings that you're doing, it helps to sort of reinforce the street edge. I do feel like the sign is a bit out of scale. I almost feel like if you went the other direction, where it was a vertical sign, you'd probably get more impact. To me, the, the height of this lettering here is, is more conducive to an environment where you have higher speed traffic, you know? I just feel like Washington Avenue, for the most part, is slow enough that a smaller sign on the street would, would suffice.
Commissioner Lukey, here.
Yeah, I just had a question. If you knew the...
If you knew the square footage of the existing sign?
The existing sign, I believe that's, I don't know that for sure. I believe it's probably close to the 32 square feet today. It's a slender pylon sign.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to clarify, so of the applications we have, so I'm understanding that, so there's a request for variance from the positive development standards, and staff is recommending not less than 321 linear feet of seating, and you're requesting that we lower that to a number of something like 240 linear feet. Is that correct?
Yes. The 221 plus the 48, or 28.
28.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can see if there's anyone else who would like to speak on this item. And seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Are we still talking about the screening, or is that the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe you weren't finished with your presentation. I can reopen the public hearing if you'd like to wrap up.
Yeah, there was kind of the three topic points. What was the parking screening? Is that a separate?
No, go ahead. We'd like to take them all together.
The parking lot to the north, again, is in existing condition, unique in its design, like everything else about this site. Also, the thing that happens in this area is this whole site has occupied space underneath it, pretty much out to the property lines on all sides. And that's the case here, coming off of this wall, pretty much in line with the existing railings I've highlighted in yellow art. And as you track across the north, in line with where these railings are, and then back around here, there's underground parking below all this. The slab that you drive on is the structural slab. So introducing vegetation is difficult in this sort of setting. The existing railing system that tracks around here is galvanized steel. It's in a very good condition today. Our design is proposing to simply introduce screen panels at the height that is in compliance for the alternate approach. We're also looking at, here's kind of a modified proposal on our design. It's still the same height, it's still applying panels in a similar fashion. We know that there's concerns over the proposal of the vinyl banner mesh as a durable product. As an alternate option we'd consider is a perforated steel panel. That's in keeping with all the materials around this that are existing. It's very durable. Perforated steel can be galvanized to match the rest of it, it can be painted, and it's going to last long. And there's also, I think that that's, it's a proposal that works well with what is existing for us to work from. Because on the north side, obviously, these elements are there, the structural conditions are what they are below us. The railing here is there for a reason, for security purposes. This is a pay parking lot. There's a security gate here, and a security gate out there. If the railing is removed, the security is, you can't control it. Someone could simply hop this curb, drive in, drive out as they want to, because this lot is so far removed from the rest of the building, and it's behind this high wall here, the planter wall, visibility is not as easy to see, obviously. So the concerns with removing the railing is security control. We are proposing to keep that, simply add the perforated panel to meet the screening intent at the height and the opacity requirement, and also keep that same design approach on either sides here as well. Again, we're introducing new trees where they've died, but these are existing tree locations, so we're keeping with the intent of the original concept on tree spacing along both side streets.
And maybe I misunderstood, but I thought that it was said that the Second Street, Second...
Second Avenue over here, or Second Street.
Whoops, Second Street was, it's really not used very much. It's used by our tenants to go into the parking lot. The building across the street has a huge parking surface lot, and the building is set way behind it. So any tenant there who's going to be looking into our property is going to see all the beautiful vegetation and trees now. I don't know if you have a good picture of that.
Yeah, I'm trying to find one here.
And on either side, on the left side is 20 Washington, which we own, and has some vegetation on it. On the right side, I think, is the small federal building, it's like a two-story building also.
And in addition, actually, this image probably shows a little bit better. So this is on the corner, Marquette and Second Street, so this is the parking lot.
So there is a sidewalk on the other side.
On the opposite side, yeah, there is a sidewalk that exists today where, you know, the minimal amount of pedestrian traffic, they'll take that side. Because of the limitations we have here, it's harder to integrate that sort of aspect. And also with the light poles and then the skyway columns along the way, you're impeding the path along the way regardless.
Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, can you tell me, it's hard to read on the plans, what is the drive aisle width in your parking lot there?
I have that dimensioned 25-foot existing.
Okay, thank you.
But the stall depth on either side is 15 feet existing.
Are there any more questions of the applicant? If they're not, I'll close the public hearing. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on, you'd like to speak on this item? Okay, then I should not close the public hearing. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Randy Manthe. I live at 100 Third Avenue South, just to the east of this location. Contrary to the comments made by the applicant and her consultant, I would state as a resident living in the neighborhood that there is significant pedestrian traffic down Second Street. There is significant traffic because the population of this neighborhood is growing, there's additional housing being built, with Whole Foods anchoring one side, with the Guthrie and the other opportunities. On the other side, there is a significant amount of traffic, pedestrian, that's going through the park board space, which is very park-like. Then you get to this block, and it's extremely barren. And then you get to the next block where the federal building is, and unfortunately, because of the recent gas line installation, those trees were cut down. But those are all being replanted, so there is an effort to create a green corridor between the Mill District and the North Loop. And this unfortunately is the missing tooth in that green connection. So anything that can be done to enhance the pedestrian or bicycle experience, because right now, when we walk through this area, we unfortunately usually have to walk down the actual street because there is no place to walk on a sidewalk of significant width. The cars on the north side of this street, their bumpers hang over the sidewalk with the light poles, and those of you who have experienced this will conclude the same observation. So with that, anything that can be done to enhance that from a beautification, maybe you can plant trees, but please don't put up a vinyl, artificial vegetative fence that is going to be green in the winter with leaves on it when everything else is barren and winter-like. So with that, I just wanted to clarify and add some support to the notion that that is indeed a significant pedestrian and bicycle corridor.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have a motion to start off the discussion. We have three applications before us, a variance for the plaza standards, a variance for the sign, and a site plan review. Commissioner Slack.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation for items A and B, variance of the plaza development standards and variance to increase maximum elbow area of freestanding sign.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion on that motion for items A and B, the two variances? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kisselmann?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Five zero.
And that motion carries. Next, we have item C, the site plan review. Commissioner Slack.
A motion to approve staff recommendation for site plan review.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Lupe here.
Sorry, I have a question for staff. Can you tell me what the, if those screened fence divider barriers were removed, what the depth of the sidewalk would be, it's existing?
Yeah, it would be a little over 6 feet.
Okay, so if they remove that, they still won't meet the requirements under the site plan review that we're requesting?
For the walkway or for the landscaped yard? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so, well, maybe, I guess I assume they were kind of one and the same, that they had, are you pretty much saying that they would have to remove a row of parking to meet this requirement, or can you...
To completely comply with the site plan review, landscaped yard, and a walkway, they would have to, I think they could possibly accommodate if that entire row was compact and a drive aisle, but it would be very close, barely have enough.
Do you know what their parking quantity is as opposed to what their max or minimum?
Because this is in a downtown district, they would be prohibited from adding any parking, so they have 58 parking spaces. They, their parking requirement is zero, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Bender.
I have a question for staff. So this is the part of Second Avenue where it, Second, sorry, Second Street, where Second Street ends, so you have a nice bike lane there, and then it just ends into private property. And so was there discussion about trying to find a way to continue that bicycle and pedestrian connection through this project?
It was not discussed, I don't think, I mean, from the applicant's perspective, I don't think the intent is to get people to use the property.
Because we're making, you know, we're making this significant investment here in Washington Avenue to add cycle tracks there, and there was some back and forth about whether or not Second Street would be a better connection, but really, the ultimate problem with that was that it doesn't connect through because it's privately owned here and there's no bicycle facility. And in fact, I think there's, I think there's a curve that it's hard to go up and down. So anyway, you know, I wish we could have done some more to improve that pedestrian and bike connection through this. This is a pretty, you know, small application and change to the building, so maybe that wasn't possible, but I did take to heart the comments that were made.
Commissioner Gagnon.
So the screening, they're now proposing something different than the cross-stitch thing that was passed?
Yeah. Well, it seemed that they brought a different proposal, which I've never seen, so...
So, but, yeah, so we haven't seen that.
Right, yeah, it wouldn't have been in your packet, they just brought it.
Okay, so by providing them flexibility, staff will still have some conversations about what that is, or...
Well, the staff recommendation is to remove the steel railing, so not dependent on what's put on them. Does that make sense?
Yep.
All right. Are there, is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kisselmann?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Five zero.
And that motion carries, so that concludes our discussion on that item. Our final item for discussion tonight is item number 13, the Superior Planting Site, and Ms. Farrar is staff.
Commissioners, I know we're getting close to the end of the meeting, but staff has inquired about the situation with the temperature in the room, so we'll see if anything happens
Good evening, commissioners. The applicant has requested that we discuss three of the conditions on site plan review this evening, so I'm going to go very briefly over the proposal and then highlight those specific conditions of approval that they would like to discuss this evening. The property location is 315 First Avenue Northeast, and then 125, 119, 115, and 101, Fifth Street Northeast. So it is the parcels that are outlined in black on your screen, obviously not in total for these, all of these parcels that are located to the west or to the east of the site, but it does include a portion of these properties as part of the main development site, which is again, 315 First Avenue Northeast. The subject property is located at the intersection of University and First. Fourth Street Northeast at one point extended into the property, that was vacated, but they are proposing to use that as one of the principal means of ingress onto the property. The applications that are before you for Superior Planting Site redevelopment include a conditional use permit for plan unit development. The property is Zone C2. The development, of course, is a mixed-use development. A variance above and beyond the two bonuses they get in the C2 district and the FAR allowance in the plan unit development from 2.7 to 2.91. Site plan review, preliminary and final plats to consolidate some underlying lots on the subject property. And then lastly, a vacation application for part of a utility vacation or utility easement, excuse me, that exists on the property. Again, the property is Zone C2. It's about a three-acre site. It's located within the boundaries of the East Tannupin Activity Center. It's also adjacent to University Avenue Southeast and Fourth Street Southeast, both of which, of course, are community corridors. And then East Tannupin Avenue, of course, is a designated commercial corridor, and that's located approximately one block from the site. So just very generally, and then we'll roll into the recommendations and the conditions of approval that the applicant wanted to discuss. I know this is a bit busy, but this is in your packets, and the only reason that I put this image up is to show this area highlighted in red. And what this, this is something that I discuss in the alternative compliance of site plan review, and basically what this is, is it's a 10-foot existing utility and drainage easement. So this is an area in which the applicant cannot actually construct a permanent structure. And so as you can see, the building itself respects that easement, but one of the things that we had talked about at the Committee of the Whole Meeting, which was in April, and subsequently, the EAW for this project was approved by the city at about that same time. But at that Committee of the Whole Meeting, one of the things that we talked about was the interface of the buildings on this site with the public street. So I'll get to that more specifically now. But basically, and there's a little bit of scribbles here, so I hope you can see this clearly, but I'm going to start from the corner at the University and First Avenue Northeast intersection. Basically, what I want to show you, just moving northward on University Avenue, you'll remember that there is a grade change in this location, it elevates up into the bridge. There's the BNSF freight and rail corridor that runs along the north side of the property. Again, this is the vacated extension of Fourth Street Northeast, and then this is the Two Street intersection. But moving northward along University Avenue Northeast, what I'd like to do is just show you the building placement components of the site plan, and this sort of tailors into the conditions of approval that I had put on the project that they would like to discuss. But basically, when you're at the intersection of University and First, the building, if you extend the building down, it's about 27 feet in that location for a separation between the property line that runs along University and that face of the building. As you move northward to the site, what you'll see is that there is a transformer, and I wanted to point out this location because it's one of the things that I note in the conditions of approval. There's a transformer that's located adjacent to a service drive. This is a one-way service drive that will be utilized for access for semis that are coming to the site to load and unload, so for loading purposes, and that will be done internally to the site. But it is a direct shot off of University, one thing that we've been concerned about. This is, adjacent to that service drive is the principal entrance to a six-story building, which is L-shaped, that's located at the intersection of the specific site. And then again, moving northward, you've got basically porches and walk-up units that vary anywhere from 0 to 4 feet from the property line, and then the actual mass of the building wall is about 13 feet for the majority of the stretch along University. There's a segment of the building on the far north side of the site in which there's this open, delineated green space. It's actually a recessed area about 80 feet to the parking garage, which is located centrally on the site. I know I'm talking quickly and running through a bunch of stuff, but I think you remember just the bare basics from, so I'll just, I'll keep rattling through this quickly, and then please stop me if you have questions. Running back to First Avenue Northeast and then moving eastward, the building placement in this location is 10 feet, 7 inches from the property line. As I mentioned earlier, there's that 10-foot drainage and utility easement that runs along that length. So basically, the building location in this area where a building could actually be set is 7 inches from the edge of that utility easement. But this is certainly just like the university side, it does require alternative compliance. As you move eastward, and I'll point out this area in a second, basically what this is, is an outdoor public plaza, so there's... Um, as you move eastward, and I'll point out this area in a second, basically what this is, is an outdoor public plaza, so there's, um, conditions of approval that are also tied to this, and I do an analysis in the planning of development section of the staff report, as well as in the site plan review component of the staff report. Um, but this is basically ground floor commercial in this building. Again, walk-up units in here, but it transitions from a five to six-story building. So this is one of the three buildings that are located on site. Again, commercial spaces that line, but basically, as you start moving up, there is a 14-foot wide arcade that leads to the parking that's provided on site. It's accessed off that First Avenue Northeast frontage. Again, moving easterly, this is a standalone two-story building that will be a restaurant component of this development. And then the tower piece of the site, I meant to bring up my pen, but I didn't, but the tower piece of the site is actually located, um, in this particular area. So it's more centrally located, um, it's not up, um, interfacing with the public street, it's, it's set back behind, and the interface with the public street are these two buildings. So again, the L-shaped building with the ground floor commercial, the, the walk-up units that exist along University Avenue, and then this, um, restaurant space that's proposed in this location. Um, in terms of the, uh, proximity of that tower to, uh, the property line along First Avenue Northeast, it's a spread of about 128 feet, um, and there's only 32 feet of that tower base that's actually exposed. Um, but as you look just basically in totality for the buildings that are meant to front along First Avenue Northeast, again, it varies from 10, 10 feet, seven inches, uh, to 38 feet for that two-story component. Um, the space between, uh, the tower component and First Avenue Northeast is outdoor dining space for the restaurant. And you probably saw in some of the, the images that they're proposing to put sort of this artsy, um, metal, um, trellis sort of canopy system in here, so it, it creates, um, a, a nice little interface, uh, between, uh, that specific building and the public street. Um, as previously mentioned, you know, you've got the service drive that, that basically, again, is for access and loading for the specific site, and then what they're basically proposing to do is to utilize the old extension of Fourth Street Northeast, which again was vacated, uh, previously. So this would be the primary access, um, to not only the retail parking and the commercial parking that's proposed on site, but also to all of the other parking for the residential, um, units that are proposed. What I neglected to mention in the beginning is that they're, they're basically proposing 280 dwelling units, about 385 parking spaces. The site is very well served by transit. Um, as I mentioned in the staff report, there, it's serviced by at least 10 different bus routes that operate, um, you know, on a very consistent basis and those that, that operate a little less consistently. But this is the blow up of the image, and what I wanted to do is just show the area that we consider to be part of the public plaza, so that you have that for consideration, um, when you're looking at the building placement provision for alternative compliance. And it's the area that's shaded and basically extends, um, to the, nearly the midpoint of the ground floor of the commercial space for the L-shaped building. So this entire area here is designed to be a public plaza. There's seating included, there's public art included, there are interpretive elements, um, that were required because the original building on this site was the former East Side Station, and so we wanted to have an interpretive element when that building was removed, um, because of the contamination on the site, just basically lending to the history. Uh, so there are a bunch of different elements. They do exceed all of our plaza standards, but you'll know that in the conditions of approval, one of the things that I do talk about, um, is how we want more, because they're asking to, um, pull that building so far back from the public street. And I'm just going to bring up this exhibit now, again, because I'm gonna rattle through the conditions of approval, but what this is meant to show is that they have designed the access off of University Avenue Northeast to accommodate, so basically, this would be where the actual service door itself would be. Um, and so with this door closed, a full semi could still load without blocking, uh, pedestrian access along the public sidewalk. However, even though Public Works and MINDOT have said that they're willing to support this, this is something that we flagged, or it's something that I flagged originally in the environmental review process, just saying that this, uh, given the, the high volume of PED and bike volumes in this area, I was just concerned about them incorporating that, the fact that this was such a big site. It seemed like there were other alternatives for access, and, and perhaps that could be accommodated on that Fourth Street extension. They've got a lot of right-of-way to work with there, um, but they do feel that that's a key element of their design. Again, MINDOT and Public Works have both said they will approve it. Um, but I, uh, I, I wanted to make sure that you knew that we were a little bit reticent about that design, um, incorporation into this building. It just seems like it sort of breaks up what could be a really nice, um, continuous PED corridor along that side of the building. Um, and then the aforementioned, uh, transformer that I'm going to, that I've requested the conditions of approval be removed is located here as well. I think I might stop there in terms of exhibits and then just go into the conditions of approval. I'm happy to go into more detail on these items. Um, but we are recommending approval of all the applications tonight. Um, on the planning use development, application for the conditional use permit, you know, we kind of have that first standard condition of approval. The second one's guaranteeing the amenities that they're proposing as an offset. You know, through the PED, basically what they're asking to be relaxed is having more of the one principal residential structure on the site, um, removing the required loading spaces so they can do that centrally in a non-designated loading space that doesn't meet our maneuvering requirements, et cetera. Um, FAR, and then height, obviously, for the 21-story component of the site, which is the condo, or the apartment building, potentially condo building, never know. Um, and then lastly, the third condition of approval is just basically us seeing that on that extension of, um, Fourth Street Northeast, that there be guaranteed an access easement, so that even if the developer that currently has possession of this entire site sells it, we're not dealing with additional curb cuts along First, and that they will be able to utilize that very large right-of-way for access to their site. Um, the second application, of course, is, uh, the FAR allowance, um, we are recommending approval of that. We think it's reasonable and consistent with adopted policies for this specific area. Um, site plan review is where the conditions of approval come into play that they'd like to contest, so I'll just wrap, um, up with that, but preliminary and final plat, and then the vacation, we also are recommending approval on, but the vacation is just a modified request from what they were originally asking. So the conditions of approval that they would like to discuss specifically tonight are six, 10, and 13. So, um, just to kind of give you, the, the conditions of approval that they're not contesting, I'll just sort of brush over those quickly, but some of the additional enhancements that we're requesting, um, for the building placement provision, the components that they need alternative compliance for are building placement, um, and location of principal entries. Um, some of the things that we believe are an offset is, um, incorporating some decorative string lights in the public plaza, as well as an additional public art piece, um, it's sort of à la Laramore Square in, in Denver, trying to get, um, some cool decorative lighting within that outdoor plaza area, that's number three. Um, four, just asking for basic cross-sections, so we understand a little bit more of the interplay, um, with the grade change along University and the walk-up units, making sure we don't have portions of the garage, um, that are visible, that it's all covered with landscaping. Um, including additional plantings on that north end of the site, um, where you've got that big recess to the parking garage adjacent to the railroad trench, and just kind of greening that up a bit more. It's all indicated now, it's currently being sod. Um, locating the principal entrance, and so this is, um, where we'll talk about one piece that they'd like to talk about, um, and I had touched on it originally, but this is the entrance piece for the lobby to the L-shaped building, so the above floors, other than the first floor, are all residential. And then you've got the walk-up units, but it's a five to six-story structure. This is the lobby in this location, and so what we'd like to see them do is pull that closer to the street. So we're recommending that that, um, be relocated to be within eight feet of the property line in that location to emphasize its importance along that street facade. Um, seven is just some architectural elements that we wanted added to the tower because it is facing inward. The, the, um, actual access point to the tower itself is in this location, and we think that's a benefit, but it could also be a con, and so, and just making sure that it's prominent and we don't have signage requests in the future, because it is inward-looking, um, we're just going to ask them to make that a little bit more prominent, so that it's intuitive for people to be able to get to the front of the building. Um, and then just a provision about walkway, making sure that it's continuous grade and paving pattern from that tower principal entrance, again, because it's about 150 feet to the public sidewalk. Um, ensuring that within this area, um, with the walkway to the parking, that it has adequate windows in that location. You've got the commercial tenants wrapping, but making sure that there's natural surveillance and it's not a scary place to be. Um, 10, again, is another question, uh, another condition of approval that they wanted to talk about. Again, it's related to this specific mechanical unit there. Um, they will have the reasons for why it needs to be located there, but it seems a shame, um, to locate it in front of the building in this specific location. So what we've done is requested that it be relocated further north to where you've got ample area, um, in that about approximately 80-foot space between the building wall, the parking garage, and the public sidewalk. Um, 11 is public plaza. Conditions of approval was just include the additional provisions I noted before, as well as the ones that they're currently proposing. Um, I did request that they work on the overall width of the, um, uh, curb cut, um, off of Fourth. Right now, it's shown at 37 feet, seems a little wide. Um, and so I've asked them to look into working with Public Works to look at further reducing, uh, the width of it in that specific location. Um, I've talked about, um, the next condition, which I've asked them to consider eliminating. I haven't required it. Um, again, Public Works and MINDOT have both approved that, so it's a CPED, um, staff concern. Um, so considering eliminating the one-way service drive off of University Avenue Northeast, and last but not least, just screening mechanical equipment on site, which is a standard condition of approval. So I know that was fast, but a lot of information, so I'm happy to, um, answer questions or just to sit down.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Slack, you have a question?
Uh, very fast and very thorough. Thank you. Um, quick question. Do, do you have a graphic that actually shows turning movements into that University Avenue driveway?
I, I'm sure that I do in the packet. This is the one that I prepared, or that I pulled out, just wanting to be able to show that, um, and actually, what we require typically for a large loading vehicle, which is a 12-foot by 50-foot wide, um, area, can be accommodated with the garage door closed and without impeding the public sidewalk. Um, the truck turning templates were included as part of the TDMP that was approved by Public Works.
Okay, so, so the width of that driveway needs to be what's being shown?
Right now, it's shown at 20 feet, and that's probably about as narrow as we'd want to get with a rig that big.
And then, uh, real quick, the second question, uh, as it relates to condition number six, um, you probably said it, because you, you threw out a lot of dimensions, but what, the principal entrance to the lobby on University, how far back is it actually now from the, the property line versus, uh, you say you want it to be within eight feet? So what is it now?
Oh, I, they are telling me it's 11 foot 10 from behind me. I remember measuring that building wall to approximately 13 feet, so 11, 11 feet, 10, 12 to 13 feet back, so it would need to be moved essentially four to five feet forward.
Okay, to the, to the property?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right, are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing for this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and if you could, uh, focus your presentation on, uh, the conditions you have concerns with. You could state your name and address for the record.
President Brown, uh, planning commission members, thank you. My name is Peter Schmuleski, uh, vice president of development for Lenar Malta Family. Uh, my office is at 400 South Fourth Street. Uh, quick presentation, uh, should've taken just about an hour and a half to two hours to get through, so should be home by tomorrow. Um, thank you, Becca. That was a great introduction to the project. I know you were all, uh, quite familiar with it, um, and I think there's, uh, a lot of good things in here with, um, uh, respect to the, uh, 14 conditions of approval, and we'll just concentrate on the, on the ones per your, uh, request. Uh, you're obviously familiar with the site. Uh, just to mention earlier, um, this is a part of five key components that we worked with, with the neighborhood group, uh, and went through, and they were a key element of this design, and a lot of the issues that we have, uh, in reference to the things we're gonna talk about tonight are good problems to have. There's a lot of things that have done with this design, like having activated, uh, street fronts almost on every edge of this building, so there's really no good place to put a transformer. Um, you know, we've hidden all of the, uh, service drive, uh, as much as we could behind the building. So I think they're good problems, and I think they're good issues to bring up and talk through, um, but really, there's only three that, um, we're gonna talk about today. Um, you can see the 14 that are up here. Most of these are either already within the plan, or we're gonna, um, change our plan to make sure that they abide by these conditions of approval. Um, so I'll flip through, uh, these, no need to talk about them too much. Um, this is number six, the principal entrance, the lobby adjacent to University Avenue Northeast shall be pulled out and relocated eight feet. It's currently 11 foot 10. Uh, this is certainly something that we can do, um, but we want to show you what is currently in this design. Um, right now, this is the entrance, and this is really an architectural move. It's to give the impression of a floating mass above, uh, an open-air, um, mass. You can see that that entrance is about a story and a half, given the change in elevation, and it is all glass. So if you can imagine this at night, uh, those solid, uh, pieces would be dark, and those glazing areas, especially that lobby, will be lit up, and it's more like a beacon that's right there. The reason for its location actually pulled back is much like the rest of the building that we pulled back, to really give back to that public element, uh, to provide ample space, and here's another view of that, um, for gathering, for entering, for exiting, et cetera, in that area. Uh, if you're familiar with the site, there is a lot of truck traffic that comes through here. Um, we've dedicated this entire design really as a primary entrance, uh, and access for pedestrians, then for bikes, then for, uh, public transit, and then for vehicles last. Um, and I think this is part of that, uh, entire entablature that we put together here, is to pull that off the street front a little bit and give more of a buffer space, keep that safety area when you have these different trucks and things going by. I think it delineates the entrance really well, in the way we've done it. Um, like I said, this is something that we can do, we just prefer the design that we have currently. Uh, number 10, the mechanical unit located, and this is, um, the transforming unit located the service drive, uh, relocated to a less prominent location along University Avenue, uh, Northeast. That first piece of that sentence, I think, is something that we are striving to do and we continually work with. The second piece is really not possible for us to do, to put it adjacent to the parking garage in that open space. We would like it there as well. This is one of those things that, um, there's never a good spot for it, especially when you have good design. Uh, ESG has done a wonderful job of lining and activating just about every single facade, so whenever you put it somewhere, it's in front of something. Um, this needs to be located near our electrical room, which is in the basement of this building, and needs to be located, uh, near where the, um, utilities come into the building. So this really isn't something that we've said, this is the spot that we want it. This is something that the engineers have come back to us and said, this is where it needs to be. Uh, that exact location, uh, is what we found to be the best of the locations, uh, in the possible areas. There's, this can't move very much. Um, but part of the conditions of approval, and I think it's number 14, talks about screening all of these mechanical units. We don't want to see this as much as you don't want to see this, so we're gonna put all of our, uh, efforts towards, uh, making sure that we can screen this, and we're gonna work with our engineers to see if there's another location. Um, but in all likelihood, it's not gonna be able to move far from here. Um, so as such, we would ask for that to be, uh, removed from the conditions of approval. Uh, lastly, number 13, um, consider eliminating the one-way service drive off of University Avenue. Um, in our opinion, this is really one of the most important things that we've done, uh, in successfully planning this building, is to pull off all of the service, to pull off the garbage trucks, to pull off the loading and unloading. Uh, if we have restaurants and retail there, there's gonna be truck traffic that comes in and out of there. Um, and I think one of the greatest things is that we put that out of the public eye. Um, we looked at all the turning radiuses and everything, uh, about where they could be elsewhere in that, um, public drive off of Fourth Avenue, which we formerly called the Wooner, uh, which is somewhat of a light definition that we are using. Really, we want the pedestrians, again, to take control. If you have trucks in there and turning around, someone coming into retail trying to park there, someone coming home to their apartment and trying to park there, um, it, it would be chaos, and that area would be a lot larger, and we'd have a lot more impervious spaces. Um, so there's a lot of things here that we think is, uh, really creates a successful area. You can see the site plan here for that service drive, a colored diagram to kind of show you those areas. And I think, again, ESG and the planners have done a great job of, um, really hiding this area and still having a very good connection between the spaces. Um, and you can see, when you're looking at a topographical view, and how, uh, the community would move through this area, you wouldn't even know that that service drive is there, and there's a lot of public areas that are advantaged from that. So that's the end of the, um, my formal presentation for those, uh, three items that we're requesting to be removed, um, but obviously available for any, uh, any questions.
All right, Commissioner Luke here, you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question. I was just looking at, um, the, the floor plan and then the basement plan showing where the electrical room was, and I'm just wondering why you don't move your electrical room to that dead corner in the edge of your parking ramp, and, and you can move the transformer?
Um, it has to do with locating it near, uh, as many units as possible, and in combination with where that utility is coming into the building. So if we put it off in a dead corner, then you're taking all of those services and running them at a much greater length to all of the units, so it makes it a lot less efficient.
Okay, and then I, I, I didn't see it in the packet, but do you have a turning radius diagram showing? Because I, I was thinking about that stretch University, and it's kind of an uphill sort of thing, and I'm trying to think if I was driving or walking or biking there, what it'd be like to encounter a semi-truck? How wide does it have to swing? Is it swinging into the oncoming lanes, um, on University?
Yeah, and that's something we're exploring too, and I think the entrance for that will likely be edited. I, if you can see right now, it's a straight-on entrance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we would likely round that, which would be beneficial for the truck turning radius, and also it would increase the plaza for the entrance to the residential area. So if you can imagine, if it's just a one-way right turn, that we can bring that radius into our site to make it easier to enter that area. Uh, either way, um, wherever anyone is going to be entering this site, they're gonna encumber the same thing. It's, if we need to service this site at some point along the site, a semi-truck is going to need to enter. In our opinion, I, I think this is the best spot to do it. Uh, it's off this front-facing First Avenue, uh, area, uh, and it also puts them out of the public eye, uh, as quickly as we can. And this is something we will explore even to the speeds of the garage door that will in that area, that you wouldn't be blocking that area. But otherwise, it should be a straight shot.
But is it pulling in or is it backing in?
It's pulling, it's pulling straight in. It's all one-way. So they would circle, they would turn right onto University Avenue and then right into the site. So that's what I'm talking about.
And then they would carry through the site and leave a different way?
Yes, and they would go straight, and then they would leave out of the vacated Fourth Street to the right.
Thank you.
So it's almost the least amount of time that you could possibly service this entire site. There is no backing up. There's no turning around. It's, it's almost a, a solid loop through the site.
Commissioner Slack?
I, I think it's interesting that these three conditions sort of contradict each other, especially on, on University. You, in my mind, have done, created this, this wonderful gesture with the building widening out the public realm and then sort of narrowing it the closer you get to essentially ascending over the bridge into Northeast or into the residential areas of Northeast. But in your, in your sketch right there, you don't show the, the electrical box, which I think is funny, because with that, with the gesture of pushing the building back and, and creating that strong promenade up there, essentially, your view is ended by the electrical box. So I, I personally would like to see the electrical box moved. I don't have any issues with the other two. I think that, I think that your idea for access and circulation for deliveries, I think it works well. And, and if MINDOT and our own transportation, city transportation group agree that, that driveway will work, I think that that's fine. The, the idea of pushing the building out, you know, I, I can, I can see how we'd want to see that, but again, this goes to this movement. By pushing the building out, that's really going to terminate that view. So I don't necessarily think that that's a bad thing, but I, I guess I don't have any issues with where that entrance is located. But I do think that the electrical box essentially takes away what you've done with the architecture along that street edge. So I, I would hope that you could find a different location for that.
Yeah, Commissioner Slack, thank you. I don't think, I disagree at all. If we can find a different location for it that, that is better, we're going to. There are certain things in this rendering that aren't shown. Some of that is the inaccurate description of the grade change. One of the thoughts as well is that the grade of the sidewalk against the street could follow the natural grade, but then next to the retail space would stay at a flat grade, and then that transformer then would be hidden by that grade change. Just an example of what we're studying in case we can't move the location. So I would ask, as part of the conditions of approval, that we either look for a different location or we use our best efforts in design in making sure that we make it as inconspicuous as possible in case we can't move it.
You know, I, I hate I'm going to say this, but I, I'd almost want you to take a look at maybe putting it on the other side of the sidewalk. So in line with the trees, unfortunately, we deal with that at every intersection where, you know, overhead infrastructure for, for traffic components are right at the corner, and they're always right in the middle of the intersection, you know, so it usually impedes pedestrian flow. And in this case, you know, if, if it was located maybe within the boulevard area, in between the trees, maybe that, that does less harm than actually having it right at the end of the sidewalk. Again, I hate that I had to say that, but I did.
Commissioner Slack, I, I agree, and I think there's creative ways that we could incorporate into the landscaping or landscaping bed that it kind of matches the, what we've set up there as kind of our architectural system, that we could hide it in that area. And that's our intent. Like I said, we're, we don't want to see this as much as you don't want to see it. Right now, that's where engineers are telling us it has to be, so we'll push them to find alternate locations and/or try and hide it as much as possible.
All right. Are there any other questions for the applicant? All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Victor Graham, Charlotte with 132 Bank Street Southeast. I'm not going to read all of this. This is, I am president of the Nickel Island East Bank Neighborhood Association, the neighborhood association in which this area, project exists, and also chair of the fifth Superior Plating Task Group, which is the way we do things in Niibne is when we have a big project, we form specific ad hoc task groups to handle it. And the first Superior Plating Task Group was, was set up in August of 2005, and so we have some very considerable experience with this site in, in all respect. The, the fifth, the, the task group consists of people who are not immediately around the site, like just across the tracks, on either side of the site, but also people generally in the neighborhood, including businesses, residences, and various institutions. I think it gives a really good way of getting, you know, local contact with the site. We met three times with long, lively meetings with, with Peter and his staff, and we had several smaller meetings where we went over individual topics. We think this design reflects both our own and Niibne input, our small-area plan, which has recently been, been approved regarding density, sustainability, innovative pedestrian-friendly architectural design, okay? Especially with regard to the sidewalks along First Avenue North and the Wooner, both of which we think are the best single features of this design. We see, we see the design worked out with, between us and Lennar and ESG as a model for other large projects that are sure to show up in our neighborhood, and there are two underway right now within sight of this site. So this is an important thing for us to get, that there will be additional projects of this size. At the meeting of January 21st, 2015, the state, the, the, the task group strongly approved the project, and subsequently, the Niibne Board approved the project. There are letters in file, in the files, suggesting that, our approval. This is an important site, our project, and those of us that have lived for this, with this project for decade, a decade and actually, with Superior Plating before that, are, in some ways astounded that we can have, that the site can be transformed from what it was to something of this architectural quality and that meets the requirements of the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan for Sustainable Growth. And this has got very strong capability, capabilities on both of those. With regard to the staff report, I think we just have a couple of comments on a couple of the items. In general, we agree with the presentation that Peter made with regard to items six, 10, and especially 13. We think that it's, that we, we worked over that a lot, and we think that, think that it is, it is the, the way the traffic is handled in the site, the Wooner, the hidden traffic for the, for the, for the service ideas are, are very, very good, and we think that we, we support his, his ideas. I think I'd just make a, make a comment that, that with regard to the string lights, this, I find this very puzzling, that in a city that's so concerned with sustainability and environmental use, that we're now advocating in perpetuity that we use energy, energy, energy-using lights in place of non-powered decorative things which are already in the plan, especially with regard to condition three, that, that it doesn't make any sense to me and to us that we adopt such an unfriendly environmental stance in the, in the, now, it's not a big deal, probably, but on the other hand, it's something I just got from Minneapolis City Government today, every little bit helps. And so I think that I would just like to, to, and that, and so we think, we think that the string light, and matter of fact, powered light, powered, I suppose, light, the media that was powered, from conditions three and 11 should be eliminated, just the string light feature, on the basis that they are not environmentally sound. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, Commissioner Lupe here, you have a question?
I just have a question for Aaron. Aaron, what's, what's, here is the architect, what's your opinion on the string lights? It's a, kind of the first I've heard of it has been controversial, so.
I, I think they could be, I like twinkle lights. I think they're really pretty. And when they're, when they're, when they're integrated in the right way, I think that where it's yet to be seen or known who the retail tenant is, and I think that could make a difference. I could see, in some of the earlier renderings that we had, where we had the trellis next to the restaurant, I think that's one very good opportunity, which may happen anyway, whether it's in the staff report or not. So I think that if they're done right and tastefully, I think it could be a really neat contribution.
So leaving them in, as a staff recommendation, isn't going to be detrimental to your proposal at this point?
Not at all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move item A, the conditional use permit for the plan unit development. Item B, the variance to increase the allowable FAR. Item D, the preliminary and final plat. And item E, vacation of the portion of the utility easement.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Gusselman?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Five zero.
And finally, we have item C, the site plan review.
Mr. President, I can, I can take a stab at item C. I recognize there may be comments or discussion about this. So I would move approval of the site plan review. How should I handle this? Should I move to amend it, or should I just verbally state my amendments, Jason?
I, I think you can, I think you can simply, if, if you wish to strike certain conditions, just state that. If you wish to add another condition, you can just amend it.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm moving item number C, including, eliminating number six, eliminating number 13. And I would include the word, shall consider in item 10. So item 10, read, the mechanical unit located adjacent to the service drive shall, that doesn't make sense.
Shall consider relocation.
The applicant shall consider relocating to a less prominent location.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Gusselman?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Five zero.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our business for tonight.